Welcome to the governance party.
Welcome to the governance party. So we're going to start this lovely presentation. Item one is PTA Council of PUSD 2024-25 Year End Report. Please introduce yourselves. Thank you. They're pushed here to talk. They're labeled so nicely, too. Good afternoon, President Hawley, Superintendent Dr. Blanco, and our esteemed PUSD Board members and the Administrative Leadership Team. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm May Koenig-Sang. I'm the President of PTA Council of PUSD. This is my last presentation to the board, but I'm proud to present our annual report for all that we've accomplished. I've also asked Lisa Cruzy to join me. She's currently our Secretary for PTA Council, but she will be serving as President for next year, so yay. So PTA, as many of you, I've really come to enjoy the support that we've had from each and every one of you in this room over the past several years. In the past two years as President, I've got to know each and every one of you. You've participated in our many meetings, our different events, and I can't thank you enough for being there for our community. Especially this year, you know, we actually turned 110. We started in 1915, and this year, unlike any other year, I think was just one that we will always remember. And I applaud all of you for your help. And as I reached out to our 21 Presidents for the various units in Pasadena following the Eaton Fire, just the tremendous outpouring of community. I mean, and that's what PTA does normally. But I think even exceptionally so this year, what they did in terms of putting together donations, helping to coordinate transportation to new schools, just be there for their community any way possible. Now, I know a lot of them, they had, it was tough to also just execute on regular PTA stuff. And that's what myself and our Executive Committee at Council, but we were there to really help support them, just to take the burden, the administrative burden off of whatever they needed. Because we had several of our Presidents and Board members, they lost their homes, but they remained committed to the kids and their families and making sure that once school reopened, that they were all there. And I have to say, that's above and beyond what a PTA should normally do in the course of a school year. So again, I just want to commend our amazing parents. Our Executive Committee, Scott Harden, I know he's on the other side, but he did serve as our VP of Communications. As I mentioned, Lisa, Secretary Nancy, our Treasurer, Danny Ramirez, our VP of Cultural Arts and Reflections, Lynn Hang, Financial Reviewer, Sarah Markcott, Historian, and Kitty Cahalan for advocacy. So I just want to thank my incredible Executive Committee again for their tireless efforts this year in particular. Our unit Presidents, as I mentioned, these 21 individuals really went above and beyond this past year. Again, I want to commend those that did serve two terms. Don Lee from Field, Jesse Dahlstrom from Longfellow, Amelda Quintero from Madison, Meg Metaskey from McKinley, Natalie Williams from San Rafael, Andrea Terosian, Octavia E. Butler, and Ariel Loop from Willard. These guys go above and beyond. They're doing late-night texts throughout the year, and I think that really a lot of, we really applaud them for stepping up and serving in this capacity. Our PTA units, this year we had over 4,500 members here in Pasadena. I would like to thank our Super Members also. That means that they got emails from all 21 units in their inbox throughout the year. So thank you to Jeff Albert, Elizabeth Blanco, Kitty Cahalan, Tina Fredericks, Scott Harden, Kimberly Kenny, myself, Lisa Cruzy, Natasha Mahone, Danny Ramirez, and Susan Schwartz for being our Super Members. We will be offering that opportunity again this year for any of those who would like to continue in that capacity, but thank you. It really, really does help your membership and your involvement in all of our PTAs. And congratulations to Marshall. They led with 512 members. So really great efforts on all their parts. This year, we usually try to do community events, and obviously because of the fires, we had to postpone Black College Expo. But we're hoping that in 2026, it's going to be bigger and better, and we'll be continuing to work with AAPC based on the funding that we receive from the Tournament of Roses to make that possible. And then PUSD Science Fest, again, we had to postpone that amazing event, but we're hoping March 7th, maybe 2026. We're waiting for approval on that date, and hopefully, again, we'll have it at Mirror. We did postpone our Reflections Award Ceremony again at KidSpace. It was a wonderful event. Thank you for all those that attended for that event as well. When I look back to the year, and I think of when we start, we start July 1st. So in four days, it's going to be the PTA New Year. And what we try to do at Council is to provide the training to our leaders. And so usually First District, which is the PTA, governance above us, they provide a training in June, and then we do one specifically just for Pasadena leaders in August. And so last August, we held ours at Don Benito, and you can see all of the eager faces on a Saturday morning after school starts, there to learn and connect. And I think that it's a wonderful way that Council has really brought together the community because now Presidents of the different units now know each other. Whereas you don't feel so alone sometimes when you're doing a lot of PTA things at your unit. We also, for Council, we start early. In July, we usually do our planning. We're looking at the entire year as well. And then we have many First District Association meetings that we have to attend as well. And I'd like to thank Dr. Blanco specifically because she's usually there with me at a lot of those events. We had our first Association meeting at Field Elementary in October. This year, we actually, Kitty Cahalan had led a study committee so we could look into Measure R and EE. And fortunately, we did approve endorsing that. And you can see the flyer that went out with PTA Council, and we were very happy that that did get voted on. We've also had Association meetings, again, this one, this time was with Ed 100 there. And Dr. Blanco, you can see she's there, too. We participated in the PUSD Celebration of Community Schools event at Madison. I know many of you were there as well. What we did, we created a passport that we gave to students and their families so they could go around to each of the booths and then come back to our booth for a prize for completing that. That was an amazing event. We also contributed to the First District Scholarship. We were able to obtain Rose Parade tickets. That was part of the silent auction, and that went towards, those funds went towards the senior scholarship that First District then made available to PTA members. We did have four applicants from Pasadena. Unfortunately, none of them got them, but hopefully next year. We're going to keep encouraging them. Hopefully, somebody gets that from here. On January 6th, the day before the fire, we actually kicked off the new year with an Executive Committee meeting. It was sort of that night that I kind of think back to several times over the course of the past few months where life was just as it was. And it was an amazing time that we actually had there. And, you know, unfortunately, one of our Executive Committee members did lose our house the next day. But just to think back to that event, that we were able to just have a nice dinner together and talk about what we anticipated was going to happen the next six months, but obviously that sort of changed, but we shifted course. And I think, again, just the resiliency that I think we've seen in our community has just been tremendous. We did have our Association meeting in March at Pasadena High School. We did have Dr. David Schoenfield from CHLA come and talk about grief and loss in children, how to talk to your children about it, in particular since we all experienced the traumatic event of the Eaton Fire. And so that was something that, again, I think has been, any ways that we can help just build community, and that's one thing that we've been trying to do. So in April, we did get to celebrate. The weather didn't cooperate, but that's okay. We were indoors. And so for some of you who were there with us, we got to celebrate our amazing talented artists in our, in our school district. So we're excited. KidSpace has offered to do it again. I have it in writing, so we'll do it again next year. Lisa, Nicola, and Nancy, they participate in PTA Convention, which is really one of those amazing events where all the PTA leaders throughout California come together in Ontario and learn more about PTA. There's Diane Highland and also Shereen, who's the President of California PTA as well. I also got the ability to partner with Penn. We attended a PCC Parent Education event and just to tell people about the wonderful things about PUSD. These were parents that have one, two-year-olds that are very eager to learn about schools. This is an amazing recruitment event. So I definitely got to talk up a bit about Field as well as Sierra Madre Middle School. And these guys were already like, okay, I'm going to start thinking about, like, enrolling. So definitely encourage, if you haven't already, to try to attend those events. I want to just profile real quickly the successes of one of our units. And in particular, many of you know the Journey of Washington Elementary PTA. When I first stepped into this role, we started the informational meetings, and we had the formation meeting, and then just to see them, they've had now a full year under their belt, all that they've accomplished, you know, being able to corral volunteers to help put together a new library for the students, helping to decorate. They'd had a spirit wear contest among the students, and that helped raise funds. They've also showered lots of love to the teachers and staff as well at various appreciation events, and they even held their very first Jog-a-thon. So things that I know a lot of are more established units, like this becomes sort of your annual event, but for Washington in particular, for them to finally pull this off, I just want to showcase just the incredible work and dedication that we can see, and this is just one of our 21 amazing units. We did have our closing meeting a few weeks ago, and you can see my husband's really excited to hand over to Lisa the box. I think I got this box from Scott Harden, and so it's moving out of the garage and going to Lisa. This year, amazing work. We saw an increase in the number of reported hours. This is volunteer hours, 64,060 hours. And if you times that by the hourly rate that indeed puts out a volunteer hour, I think it's about $34 an hour, that's over $2 million of love that our parents and everyone has given to PUSD. So I just want to say, that's an increase from last year. So thank you, everyone. I know it's a, it's a, it's a long journey, but it's incredible, and I think when you see the smile on the kids' faces, that's why you're up there making a balloon garden at Garland at 2:00 AM, you know, just so they can run through it. For Executive Committee next year, Ms. Lisa Cruzy will now be the President. Nancy Karompis will serve as Treasurer. Nikki Arakawa will be the Secretary. Nan Lan, VP of Membership. I'll be serving as VP of Leadership, so I'll be responsible for organizing the training that we'll be doing in August. Nicola Borland will be VP for Reflections. Meg Metaskey will be Financial Reviewer. Danny Ramirez, Historian, and Kitty Kahlan will serve in Advocacy. So I just, again, on behalf of PTA Council, PUSD, I just want to thank everyone here for your love and support, particularly this year, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with all of you in a different capacity. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. McKenzie?
Thank you for your presentation. Couple of quick questions. One, how do you get to be a Super Member? I think mine lapsed. I want to get back in. I feel left out.
Okay, I'll make sure. I'm going to send you an email come September when we, when we do the drive again.
Thank you. And then, two, with Guardian Scholarship, what is the eligibility criteria, and what can we do to make sure that students who apply in the future, either A, know about it to apply, and B, can actually submit a successful application? We don't want to leave money on the table.
Right, and this year, I think it was about $750. So again, this is First District PTA. They're the PTA above us, so they're pulling in applications from all units, from Burbank to Pomona. I was hoping we have a really good chance, you know, because we're Pasadena, but I think that, you know, the year before, I didn't have any student apply. That was a, and I, and I think that this year, we actually, we had four students from MIRROR that applied. I reached out to each of the PTA Presidents at each of our high schools to remind them of the deadlines. It's a pretty straightforward application. It's a Google Form. I think it's the same things that seniors are already providing in terms of personal statement, their transcripts, all of that, but I think that if we can just, you know, if there's other suggestions on how we could get the word out, because that's, that's a unique scholarship that's only available to PTA members. And so students, when they're in high school, they join, and that's why you see, like, our high schools have the highest number, like Marshall, for example, because we have students that are now members of PTA. So yes, definitely, we will, once we hear about it, we can send it to our Board, and then if you can help us also get the word out, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Harden?
Well, May, I want to thank you for your two years of excellent service to PTA Council. I know it's been tough with everything that's gone on with the fires, but I have admired how you have kept our community together. It's, PTA is an organization that, that has the ability to, to keep us as a community, even though some of us may not be physically near each other. So I'm proud of Council's role in that through these, these turbulent times. I want to congratulate Lisa for being the incoming President of PTA Council. It's a big job, but I know you're, you're eminently qualified for it, so I look forward to working with you as part of the Council. It's bittersweet for me, because I'm taking a step back from, from Council, but I know that we've left the organization in good hands, and just encourage the community, even if you're not an enrolled parent at a school, you can join a school's PTA, and the PTAs are stronger when all of the community gets involved. It's a great way into the culture and climate of a school, and it's also a gateway to other organizations, and I think in the past, Council has been a, a bridge to encourage parents to join their ELAX, their African-American Parent Councils, and all the different organizations that exist to support the campuses. So I'll be a Super Member. I'm making that commitment. Hopefully, some of my colleagues will as well, but I'm proud of you. I'm proud of everything, all of our 21 PTAs, and especially Washington, that's our brand new, newest PTA. So keep doing it, and I'll pledge my support to all the units who, who need it, and always be a lifelong PTA member. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Scott.
Anyone else? Nobody else? All right. Well, thank you so much for your time and informing us. It sounds great. All right, thank you. And now we hear from CAC, Report to the Board of Education.
Thank you. There's a sticker. Good evening, President Lee, Dr. Blanco, and the Board. For those who haven't met me, I'm Adria Schneider. I'm the Chair of the Parent-Led Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. The annual CAC recommendations I'll be presenting tonight have been submitted to the Special Education Department for review and are now being presented to the Board for consideration. Our objective, we'd like these recommendations, or these recommendations do reflect our committee's priorities and desire to see progress on the following initiatives during the 25-26 school year. Our priorities were driven by CAC member and subcommittee feedback, conversations with parents of children with special needs, ongoing discussions with Fed leadership, academic consultants, teachers, union reps, advocates, board members, PUSD parent committee leaders, and community stakeholders. Our first goal, we'd like to see an improvement in parent guardian communication. We would like to see the frequency and quality of communication with parents improve. We're asking for pertinent feedback about our children's daily activities to be shared. It's worth noting that we recognize PUSD does an excellent job sharing information that applies to the broader student and parent community. What we're seeking, however, is not more general communication, but more personalized, meaningful feedback about our children's daily activities and experiences. We are asking to get communication logs to be used by special education teams at the five focal schools identified in the SIM plan. Those are the elementary schools consisting of Altadena, Don Benito, Hamilton, Sierra Madre, and Webster. We hope to pilot this log implementation plan at the focal schools and expand to all primary schools with students with IEPs next year. This recommendation is at the top of our list for two primary reasons. District special reports often point to the need for improved parent communication, and the current SIM plan includes references to addressing parents in a more culturally proficient manner. However, from the CAC's perspective, the how is less critical than the what. We are truly seeking consistent, specific feedback about our children's daily activities and progress at school, something that many parents we've spoken with believe is lacking. Just a quick note on the communication logs, what we're looking for is potentially a binder that is exchanged between teachers and parents. It can be brief handwritten notes, or it can be templates with standardized fields. We also believe that aides can complete these logs with teacher sign-off. It doesn't have to be the teacher on her own. So our first reason was that we believe a true commitment to communication would consist of these logs. The second reason we feel these are especially vital for families is because we have students with special needs who are nonverbal or have delayed communication skills. At present, many of these parents feel in the dark about their children's daily well-being at school. We believe that providing regular communication logs can help ease parent anxiety, build trust, and foster stronger parent-teacher relationships. Here are some templates of the logs that we're discussing. They can be a half-sheet of paper, and as you see, there are fields that can just be checkboxes for the teachers and aides to fill out. And on the right, you can see more open fields for brief notes, but also, we like that someone can circle "my day was great" or "my day was tough." Simple things like this can say a lot to parents who really don't know what goes on during the day with their children. What are some of the anticipated benefits? We've already discussed, parents will feel less in the dark about their children's day, and it has the potential to improve home-to-school collaboration, but we believe it can reduce conflict at IEP meetings. There will be no surprises. It'll give us better longitudinal tracking of academic, social, emotional, and behavior goals. And to that end, we believe when you have better longitudinal tracking, you'll have the ability to identify intervention needs better. We also believe these logs can potentially help the district avoid litigation by fostering better parent-teacher relationships. We firmly believe that PUSD cannot fulfill its commitment to improve parent communication without making communication logs a priority. These logs are not just a request. They're a heartfelt plea from families of special needs students who long to feel more connected and informed. We owe it to them to listen and to make this vital responsibility a reality. Our second goal, we'd like to see an expansion of inclusion practices. But before I begin, I'd like to note that in no way does expanding inclusion programming mean we are seeking to impede access to special day classes. Having the continuum of services available to all students with IEPs in the district is critically important to families, but we do not find that the district is failing to provide separate learning environments. We find that inclusive classrooms are lacking. We are asking the district to reexamine their approach to inclusion programming. We would like to see inclusion happening at higher rates across all grade levels. Not only should pre-K and elementary students have more access to early interventions in inclusive or embedded programs, but our secondary students also deserve increased access to a broad course of study. We'd also like to see a reversal of the trend of failing the least restrictive environment indicators. But to step back for just a moment, for anybody at home that might be wondering what we're talking about when we talk about inclusion, this graph illustrates exclusion, which you should recognize as special needs children who are on separate campuses or non-public schools. Separation is our special day classes on comprehensive campuses. Integration, these are students that spend time in general education with peers, like electives, for example, but their core subjects are taught in an SAI setting. Inclusion, this is students who spend the majority or all of their day in inclusive classrooms and settings. But beyond being present in the same classroom, we see classroom environments where our special needs students feel welcomed, supported, befriended, and appreciated. They deserve to feel a sense of belonging among their community of peers. To go back for a second to the LRE data, this is our past three data collection years, and as you can see, for preschool, we're doing pretty well with meeting our targets, but we have failed to meet the state indicators for the past three years for our primary and our secondary students. But for us, this isn't about compliance, it's about equality, it's about dignity, and it's about our children's rightful presence. The research proves included students are more likely to have better communication skills, higher academic achievement, wider social networks, fewer behavior problems, more opportunities for higher education, and improved rates of employment as adults. While we, as a district, strive to prepare all students academically for life after high school, many special needs parents, primary focus is on their child's ability to live as independently as possible. We believe expanding inclusion opportunities is a vital step in helping these students build the skills and confidence they need for a more fulfilling and independent adulthood. What we're proposing are next steps. We want to take a systems approach. Alignment and accountability are required for scalability and sustainability at all levels within the district. Or simply put, inclusion cannot rest on the shoulders of teachers and paraprofessionals Our first step in this systems approach would be identifying the roadblocks. We'd like to survey teachers and staff to see what the issues with the inclusion program have been, and/or we'd like to possibly additionally leverage interviews previously conducted by our consultants. Once we identify the roadblocks to our inclusion practices, we'd like to hold a summit. This summit would help us foster inclusive mindsets and practices by ensuring that all stakeholders agree on how to achieve the shared goal. And by stakeholders, we really do mean everyone in the district. We want teachers, paraprofessionals, parents, board members, the superintendent's office, the academics' office, service providers, everybody would be a part of this conversation because they're a part of all of these children's lives. Some of the potential topics for our summit, continuing to expand on universal design for learning, we need our general education teachers to have more opportunities to learn differentiated learning skills. We want to discuss a commitment to appropriate classroom aide staffing. The CAC and UTP agree that sufficient instructional aide staffing is essential for inclusive classrooms, and we believe it has the potential to reduce the reliance on and requests for one-on-one aides. We'd like to make enrollment at the school of residence increasingly possible. We'd like to discuss rostering. Site administrators would evaluate their master schedules within inclusive lens, and we want to embrace more peer support arrangements. We can equip and support student peers to provide ongoing social or academic support. This would fall in line with mentoring, which we're targeting for the next school year to see an increased presence of on campuses. While our focus is on improving inclusion opportunities for our special needs students, we feel it's important to mention that inclusion classroom settings also benefit neurotypical students. This Project Access study from Vanderbilt University is just one example. As you can see, included students, neurotypical included students had a 15-point grade inquiry, increase by being in an inclusive setting as opposed to a separate setting. So inclusive classrooms do equal improved grades for our neurotypical and neurodiverse students. The urgency of improving inclusion practices can best be captured by the words of Dr. Eric Carter of Baylor University. Early segregation does not merely predict later segregation, it almost ensures it. We have a responsibility to break this cycle. The time to act is now. Our third goal, we'd like to strengthen our disproportionality oversight and accountability. This goal is, of course, related to our compliance and improvement monitoring plans that are drafted to address the over-representation of specific racial or ethnic groups in special education programs, as monitored by the California Department of Education. PUSD is currently significantly disproportionate in the number of white students placed in non-public schools. We are in the middle of a multi-year compliance sanction cycle, and we believe money would be better spent toward proactive versus reactive means. As the Board is aware, being identified as disproportionate in the number of white students in separate school placements for three consecutive years triggered a mandatory requirement to reallocate $800,000 of IDEA federal funding to activities supporting compliance improvement. It's critically important to the CAC, especially given the trying budgetary times we're in, that we do not let this happen again. However, we are currently on track to let this happen again. We have persistent disciplinary disproportionality. In addition to our NPS placement disproportionality, PUSD is also on track to be identified by the state as disproportionate in its suspension rates for African-American students. in its suspension rates for African-American students. This disproportionality issue is being proactively addressed by the new SIM plan, recently presented to the board. We do not deny that PUSD drafts plans for improvement, but it is discouraging to see action plans developed and departments assigned only for targets to be repeatedly missed. We also acknowledge the district's efforts to embrace restorative justice practices, including the implementation of the Alternative to Suspension Program and the collaboration with the Western Justice Center. While we applaud the reduction in the number of suspensions district-wide, disproportionality has persisted. This graph provided by the academics department outlines the under, fair, and over representation of students in for suspension rates district-wide. This was from August to April. As you can see on the left, we have our under-representation, which is made up of white Caucasian and general ed students. In the middle, we have under fair representation Hispanic Latino, English learner, and English-only students. And in the far right, in the over-representation, we have special education, African-American students, McKinney-Vento youth, or our unhoused youth, and the youth in foster care. We view the current challenge as a lack of transparency. We feel there is limited feedback about disproportionality. The data we primarily receive is shared via CDE notification after we fail an indicator and not via periodic progress reports. We have inconsistent implementation. Action plans are developed, but without ongoing oversight and course corrections, we feel accountability is lacking. And we crave more context. Parents desire an understanding of the journey and not just the outcome. We are asking for transparent progress reporting. That would include the steps taken, which would be the actions in the SIM plan, and we'd like to know how they're implemented. We want to know what worked. We'd like to have those successes identified. We'd also like to hear about the challenges and roadblocks. Making a course correction is okay, as long as we all are notified about it and it's done in good faith. Then we would make adjustments and then share that plan out. Our proposed progress report implementation would include creating accountability fail stops. We see the newly hired SIM coordinator as instrumental in gathering and distributing pertinent and timely information about our SIM plan implementation progress. We'd also like to see these reports distributed on a consistent reporting schedule, potentially quarterly. We'd like these reports to be comprehensive and standardized so we can, as parents, understand what progress has been made from quarter to quarter. And we'd like them available in a centralized reporting location. Our goal is to move beyond identifying failures toward data-driven sustained improvement. But what does the current data tell us? According to the 2324 school year figures on Data Quest, African-American special needs students in PUSD were suspended at three times the rate of white special needs students and twice the rate of Hispanic special needs students. This disparity requires us to confront a deeply entrenched systemic failure that continues to disproportionately harm our African-American students, denying them the equitable treatment and dignity they rightfully deserve. And this goal extends well beyond merely meeting compliance standards or avoiding penalties. While transparency and data-driven oversight are essential tools, true progress is measured by our commitment to doing what is right, not because it is easy, but because it is necessary. The Community Advisory Committee urges the district to approach this work with both conviction and compassion. Pursuing equity is not merely an educational objective. It is a profound moral imperative. We recognize this journey will be complex and demanding, but to build an inclusive school community where every child can truly thrive, doing what is right and doing what is hard must go hand in hand. For our last goal, we'd like to see the development and implementation of a standardized special education teacher and related service provider evaluation tool. Currently, there is no evaluation tool specifically designed for teachers assigned to teach the special education program. This was outlined in the Ascendancy Solutions internal report. We want to ensure special education teachers are held to high achievement standards. We also believe the Special Education Department and site administrators should implement standardized evaluation tools for our related service providers that include our speech, our occupational therapist, our physical therapist, et cetera. We believe when strong teachers are recognized and identified, that teachers will have, oh, sorry. Special education teachers and staff have highly specialized roles, supporting diverse and complex student needs, yet their performance is often measured by generic evaluation tools that fail to capture the nuance and expertise required for this critical work. Compliance and accountability. Ensuring that we have compliance and accountability should not be viewed as a punitive measure, but as a tool for reflection, collaboration, and continuous improvement. By adopting standardized evaluations tailored to the special education department and teachers, we can foster a culture of excellence and ultimately drive better outcomes for our students. Implementing a standardized, role-appropriate evaluation process ensures that special education staff are assessed fairly and accurately and based on their unique responsibilities. All educators and service providers should be held to the same standards. We view the creation and adoption of a standardized evaluation tool as an investment in quality teaching, equity, and a brighter future for each child we serve. In summary, the CAC is asking for communication logs. We'd like this initiative to be piloted at the five focal schools in the coming school year. We're looking for more robust inclusion at all levels within the district. We'd like to see improved disproportionality compliance mechanisms, and we'd like to see standardized special education teacher and staff evaluations. These recommendations are not new. They are proven strategies successfully implemented in neighboring self-pas and public schools nationwide. They are practical, attainable, and most importantly, centered on what's best for students with special needs. Myself and the executive team would like to thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. It was very informative. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Kenny?
My question is actually for staff because I'm wondering what process will happen to respond to your requests, your recommendations. I know the board, as a board member, I think we would all be interested in understanding which of these staff can start to implement, you know, what their approach would be, you know, what would be happening over the next year. Before the LCFF, we had lots of different parent groups come and make recommendations to the school board. And we were starting to kind of standardize a process to responding. But I think this is a very thoughtful presentation that kind of deserves a response. And I don't know if it's a report that kind of goes with the implementation plan, but something that can be shared with both you so that you know what to expect and with us as well.
Just to briefly step in before they have a chance to respond, we did speak to the academic consultants and let them know that we would like to implement this log program at the focal schools. It would be a proof of concept. If it fails, then we won't try to press to get it elsewhere. But if it's successful and parents feel heard and seen and it's a success, then we would like to roll it out in a more broader scope. So they've heard that. They've also heard that. So I'll give it to them.
Anybody else have a question?
Oh, is that what we're doing here? Okay. I think this, okay. Ms. Iverson?
Okay. I just want to be more clear on exactly the question that you're asking me because there's four focal areas. And first, I want to thank you. It's been a very good year of working with you, and it was a very collaborative process, and I thank you. Because there's many things that they're addressing, and we are also implementing a plan as well. And we're going to roll that out in August to you all. So it would be my hope that we could collaboratively address these things together.
Something that kind of laid out, you know, here's how your four points will or won't fit in with our current implementation plan. Because maybe they're coming in year two or year three, or we could do this, but in this kind of way, or how, like, how you're addressing each of these. I think, as a response, again, you know, as we said back when we started to develop this, again, before the LCFF, it's fine to say no, we can't do that, or we can't do that now, or we can't do that in exactly the way you're asking, but we want to do it. But I think they deserve a response. Okay.
Okay, so I go through number one. One is the communication logs. And so you're asking for daily communication logs?
Not, not right now.
Oh, okay, so.
But I'm assuming something formal.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. We're working on that.
Yeah, not right this second.
All right, so the superintendent would like to say something.
Thank you so much for your thoughtful presentation. My question was, because I know that you also have been working with the educational consultants on the disproportionality plan. And do you, is this aligned, right? Like, because it seems like to me that it is aligned with some of the strategies that were in there, and special ed is already planning to implement them, right? Or I could be wrong?
If I can speak out of turn, when we mentioned that we'd like to see these logs implemented, they nodded in agreement and voiced that they've seen this done in other districts. So it wouldn't be unheard of to do something like this here.
I guess what I'm trying to say is I see the two plans being married and working closely well together.
I agree.
Yes, we certainly hope so.
And then my second question would be to Dr. Canal, and maybe you've done this already. You may or may not know our labor partners have had huge interest in special education negotiations this year. And so have you talked with them about this idea with the logs and get a reaction of how they think that the teachers might perceive it?
I have. We haven't spoke with them on this particular issue. We have spoken with the union about some other issues, but we would be interested in talking to them about it. We do know of teachers within the district that already do this for their whole classrooms. So it's also, I'd like to say again, not out of the realm of possibility.
That's great to hear.
We did hear about that a special education committee is being formed, and we would love to be on that committee. We are seeing us raise our hands that we want to be on that committee. When the report came out, or the email came out last month about a special education committee being formed for this type of articles, I guess being added to the, their terms or something, then we want to definitely be on that committee.
Dr. Canal can talk to you more about what was agreed upon with them, but it's always good to bring our partners along with us as we're planning. So that's great that some of our teachers are already doing this. And I think it can be an effective strategy, and particularly in the focal schools. That's great that you're trying to pilot. Did you want to say something, Dr. Channel?
I did want to just share too, because I think Ms. Iverson briefly alluded to it. But on August 7th, we will be bringing a presentation on the special education implementation plan. And I too want to reiterate what Ms. Iverson said. It's been very collaborative, having the input and feedback loops from the CAC. We want the process to be broadly collaborative. So that also includes members of the teachers' union, our classified assistants, and things like that, lots of voices. What you will see preemptively, some of you have had a little bit of a preview of what the findings were and what the recommendations are. But the actions do coincide and nicely intersect with the four areas that our CAC representatives have shared or executive board have shared. In addition, just as they have thoughtfully brought in our SIM for a significant disproportionality plan alongside things that fall outside of that area, the special education implementation plan addresses all of those in one place. It is, to be very blunt, a lot, a monstrous amount of actions that we are sort of scoping through to determine what is actionable and reasonable in that time period. So I just want you to know that in a month's time, you'll be able to have a summary of what that looks like. And in the meantime, well, and actually included in that is continuous collaboration and communication with our parent partners.
Ms. Bailey?
Yeah.
Thank you, Helen.
I'm sorry. I just appreciate you guys so much. This is like the best work that I've seen come out of this committee since I've been on the board, and I've been here for eight years. So, thank you. What what really resonated with me in your presentation, believe it or not, is when you talked about accountability. Accountability, because, believe it or not, a system of accountability will help ensure that we're hitting our targets. And it will also help us identify where the weaknesses are in the system. So when I saw that up there and then you even laid out a plan, I felt like I needed to pay you. Sorry I can't afford it, but you guys, this was very well done, and I appreciate you. Thank you for this.
We really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I will second Trustee Bailey's sentiments about the quality of this group, the empathy of this group, and how inclusive you've been. I've been to as many of your meetings as I could this year, and I've experienced such a sea change in terms of engaging respectfully staff, but also engaging the community in a restorative and an emotionally positive way. And so I thank you for that. What resonates with me on this is the idea of testing good ideas, you know, before we put, you know, full implementation behind them because that's a great way to ensure that we can iterate and continuously improve the ideas that you're suggesting before they're fully implemented. So I appreciate, especially with the communication log and trying to get, you've gotten the right idea. Now it's time to try to get the idea right with regards to that. So, and I also do appreciate staff, including Dr. Hill, for presenting the big, bulky plan. Look forward to that in August. So thank you very much and good work.
Ms. Chi?
First of all, I would like to thank you for your amazing presentation. I recognize your faces from some previous meetings, so I see your dedication. My name's Leslie. I'm on the Student Assembly. We work very closely with the Student Think Tank, and at the heart of what we do is representation, inclusion, and providing voices to students who aren't always seen or heard. So my question is, what can we do to support you?
There's no "here we go." I heard that. Hi. I actually emailed the Think Tank. I didn't hear back. There's, I know. I said that publicly, and this will be on record forever. Unprofessional of me or her? Both? Me? Her? Her. It's her, right? Okay. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, I won't get Dr. Hill in trouble. That was very unprofessional of you.
And humor. I meant to add another adjective.
I don't want to start crying, but I don't think, I don't know if the neurotypical students of PUSD completely understand how impactful and beneficial you could be, not only to the lives of our kids, but to the culture of the district, which is why we would really love to meet with you guys, maybe at the top of next year, and just discuss, and we want to hear your feedback on what your experiences have been with your neurodivergent peers and what your ideas would be for mentorship. I think you guys have a much better sense and a much better finger on the pulse of what would work amongst kid to kid. And we'd love to hear from you. But you guys hold such a beautiful thing for our kids that even in 2025 can be really tricky. We have grown to be a culture that accepts, or we should accept, people with different sexual orientations, preferences, colors, shapes. For some reason, the disabled are still, are still not there as far as acceptance and belonging. So we'd love, we'd love to hear from you, and maybe someone will email me back this time. Sorry. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Fredericks?
Well, I appreciate being the CAC liaison, and, I mean, I think we've all witnessed the tone that you set, the positive tone, the collaborative tone that you set, and that makes a huge difference. And I absolutely appreciate the department leaders coming too, and I'd and I sense a real reception here, and I think we have a good starting point. What I kind of, I'm going to kind of piggyback off of Trustee Kenny's point about process. So I, I don't want us to go away and then be back next year with the same thing, you know? So I hope there's a process that, you know, doesn't make you do too much of the work that we've already been doing. It's more of, you know, cohesion. So you have enough to do as parents. The piece that kind of resonated with me is, is the logs, and knowing, having that connection with your child, because I remember when I had to drop off my child, and I went to work, and it's really great to know that little piece of what happened. And this is like, for my child who can, is verbal. So for you to have that, another barrier like that, that's, that's very difficult to stay, you know, being a team to support your child with, with the school. So thank you for your collaborative spirit.
Thank you. So this was really interesting, and I just wanted to, to sort of end the discussion. So the superintendent and I did a breakout session at the Selpa Administrators of California ADR Conference this year, and I know Mr. Harden came and visited. And as we were talking about inclusion, somebody in the audience said, "Well, the new term is rightful presence," because there's like a taint on inclusion that, you know, prejudices come out. So I heard you say it once, and I was really happy that you said it, because I've been trying to say rightful presence and not inclusion, and kind of walk away from that. But, you know, everything is a, language is, is a, really changes the way people think about things. And so I just wanted to say that, and thank you for this. It was very interesting. And thank you for your work, and we'll be in touch and following up. Oh, Dr. Velazquez.
My comment is really about scheduling and how to figure out the scheduling of all the meetings for next year. I think it's going to be very important so that we can have English learners also be part of your meetings.
We have spoken with FACE, and we're going to discuss that. It's forthcoming.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are on the oath of office, and I think there's two people in the audience who have been waiting for this. So I will come up there. We'll do the oath of office up here. And. All right, I'm coming up. And let's start with Lucas Kittle. Public comment for, no, we do this one first. One sentence, and then you can repeat. I'm not going to go too far, because then people get pissed. Okay, and then when I say, ah, you say your name. Okay. "I."
Lucas Kittle.
"Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will defend the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will bear true faith to the Constitution of the United States."
"True faith and allegiance."
"True faith and allegiance to the United, to the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And I will well and faithfully discharge."
"And I will well and faithfully discharge."
"The duties upon which I am about to enter."
"The duties of which I am about to enter."
Welcome. And this is Adeline Wick. So just watch that. So here we go. So I'm going to say "I" and then your name. "I."
"I." "Adeline Wick."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And I will well and faithfully discharge."
"And I will well and faithfully discharge."
"The duties upon which I am about to enter."
"The duties upon which I am about to enter."
Welcome.
We have a public comment from the chief of police.
Good evening, city board members, members of the staff. Thank you for allowing me to have this podium for a few minutes. What I'd like to do is make sure that, in the spirit of partnership, we in the police department are reaching out to our partners here in the city of Pasadena regarding some of the goings on that have been happening in our city of late. I'm sure everybody's aware of the federal presence, specifically the Department of Homeland Security and ICE in our communities, and it has certainly created a disruption and an uproar, and certainly a lot of fear in the community. So our goal is to reach out to our partners. That is what this is about, is to reach out to you folks just to make sure we're putting information out that maybe can soothe a little bit of the fear. I'm sure it's not going to quell it completely, but the idea is to make sure that we understand what our role is, and we pass that on to you folks so that you have some knowledge of what it is we're trying to do. I want to start by saying that we stand with our folks in our community. We understand the angst and the fear that these things are causing. And we, even if it wasn't precluded by law, would not be assisting in immigration activities. It is precluded by law. In the state of California, through SB 54, we are not allowed to assist the federal authorities in any immigration activities. And in fact, if we even associate with federal authorities on anything other than immigration that we're working with, there is a signed document that says, even those agencies, should they become involved in immigration activities, we cannot participate. So there's a certification and some other things that go along with it. We won't allow that certification to happen with our staff. So I really wanted to bring that home, that I want to quell the fear as best we can, that the police department here in Pasadena will not be associated with immigration activities. On the flip side, there are some requirements that we have that we want to make sure that the public is aware of. And on top of not assisting and being precluded from assisting, we're also precluded from mitigating, obstructing, or intervening in those activities, and it's an unfortunate portion of the law. But like everything else, sometimes it's, it's an uncomfortable piece of what we do, where we might want to intervene and kind of engage in different ways. We're precluded from doing that. So the idea here is to really let people know that we're here for them in the context of other activities, police activities. We want to make sure, because we understand that people are afraid to call us, even for other criminal-related matters, or maybe quality of life matters that they need us to take a look at. We want to assure that when we get called out to anyone, to anyone's home, to anyone's business, we are not asking, nor do we care what anyone's citizenship is. That is not a question that any police officer in the past, any police firm will ask. It doesn't have any bearing on what the service will be when we arrive on scene, and we want to make sure people can call and feel comfortable that we're going to come out and take care of whatever the police action that is needed. So in the short term, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're getting the federal authorities, particularly ICE. May I continue? Okay.
Yes, go.
Particularly ICE, to make sure that at least they're, in their after-action activities, that they're notifying us of those activities so that we can verify that that was an authorized activity they were engaged in. What the fear is, is that nobody knows who some of these folks are, because maybe the uniform is different, or they don't have some type of verifiable identification. In the two cases that we've had, people that were taken into custody, we in the after, after effect have gone out and verified that those were legitimate operations, legitimate in the context of authorized and legal. Legitimacy, we'll question in a later debate. But the fact of the matter is that we consider that those were official unauthorized iterations of what it is that they're doing. So it's important to recognize that, and then tell folks that if they feel that there's an issue where they are dealing with people who are not authorized agents, they can call us, and we'll come out, and we can verify that. We can validate that. If we start getting a lot of calls, you know, there are kidnappings and things like that, that people are kind of throwing out there, it's incumbent upon us to respond. But once we get there, that response is going to be limited to ensuring that there's no illegal activity taking place. And if it is authorized, then we will remove ourselves from that circumstance and allow it to happen. So I just wanted to make sure that I threw those things out to this board, as you are a very important piece of this community. The people that you represent are very important to us in the police department, and we want to make sure that we're being transparent with what it is that we are trying to do. The last note is the city, via the mayor, has dispatched a communication that you might have seen at the last city council meeting, that is making sure that the city understands the cities, that the city fathers are putting out to the folks in the community what it is that the city plans to do and how they're interacting with authorities to try and solve some of these problems. I also dispatched a letter to ICE, to the director, requesting that we have those after-action reports and make it a little bit easier for people to identify folks that are involved in actual authorized occurrences. So we're in the middle of that communication. None of what I said will really take the fear away from those folks who are most sensitive among us, but we are trying to reach out to the community. In fact, yesterday, we met with some of the folks in the community at an apartment complex in the 500 block of Marengo, and we had probably 100, 120 persons show up, and we took Spanish speakers with us, and we were able to communicate with folks that we want you to call us. We gave out our business cards. We did those kind of things. So we want to be an advocate for folks. We want to be a tool for them to make sure they're solving those other problems, and we certainly don't want to be a barrier to them getting information and really figuring out what it is that's going on until this thing can get pieced together. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak with you. I look forward to other opportunities to come in and really give information as to what it is that we're doing, and we certainly want to have that open communication dialogue. So thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I had a question for him.
So now we, is that all for public comment? Okay. So now we're going to recess to close session. Thank you all very much. We'll be back soon. Welcome back. Thank you for being here. Right now, I'm going to do the readout for the closed session. Concerning item E1, case number 2025040565, by a vote of six to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Concerning item E2, case number 958203, by a vote of six to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Concerning item E3, case number 964598, by a vote of six to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. In closed session, the board voted to immediately suspend without pay and issue a notice of dismissal to certificated employee AS5626607 per Education Code Section 44934, and to dismiss said employee at the end of 30 days from the date of said notice, unless a hearing is timely requested per the Education Code. The board further directed the superintendent or her designee to give all required notices under the Education Code to effectuate the immediate suspension and notice of dismissal. The board vote was as follows, seven to zero. And that is the adjournment of closed session. Calling to order at 8:32.
Here.
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 Presente.
Here.
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 Trustee Kenny, would you do the pledge? Student Board Public Comment, we have eight public comments.
Karen Jane followed by Kenny Connie, pronounced Connie. All right, by Connie, no less than.
Dear Honorable Board of Education Members, my name is Karen Jane, and I have been a community volunteer for science education in PUSD for about 30 years. From 1990 until about 2005, the district had a hands-on science program in the elementary grades called Science for Early Educational Development, or CSEED, that was nationally recognized. In all classrooms at all schools, science was taught through investigations, critical analysis, and the keeping of notebooks. The CSEED program was terminated, but the supplies and the curricula that were used have remained, and they have been stored in the Science Resource Center at the District Service Center all these years. We have an inventory of the supplies, which is available to teachers electronically of more than 1,000 items. The inventory includes the exact aisle, shelf, tray, or cabinet where each item is located. What we own would be the envy of other school districts. I have continued to keep these supplies organized. They are thus available to any teachers who are still teaching hands-on science in elementary or secondary grades. I have continued to send them to schools upon request, and they are available to teachers who come to the Science Resource Center and find what they need for their lessons. Recently, 10 pallets of these valuable supplies were thrown away. I have informed administrators about this disposal of supplies, but have not received any replies. This represents a loss of money and materials, of course, but more importantly, it represents dismissal and disrespect for the years of research done by professors at Caltech, together with teachers in PUSD, on how to teach science to elementary school students. My concern and the reason I'm speaking to you tonight is that the supplies should be maintained, and they should get into classrooms. One way to protect and distribute the supplies would be the restoration of the position of STEM coordinator, which would also restore support for the teaching of these crucial subjects. Very immediately, the supply should be protected by assigning someone to oversee them. If a school district employee spends even just a few hours a week organizing the supplies and sending them to schools, the Science Resource Center will remain functional. Without this maintenance, the center will become unusable, and a great resource will be lost. If you would like to visit the Science Resource Center and see this treasure, I'd be happy to meet you there and to show you around. Thank you for your attention.
The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of public comment via email. These comments will be made part of the permanent record of this meeting. Connie.
Hello, everyone. I am here as a parent of a special needs child. My name is Connie, and my daughter attends Don Benito Elementary Special Day class. She will be in second grade this school year. I am here in regards to implementing the daily communication log. This topic is important to me, as well as to all the other moms. We need to be able to understand what and how our kids are doing on a daily basis in their classroom setting. We understand teacher informs parents, but it is also limited due to the teacher having other priorities on their plate. Whether it's a one-on-one aid or a classroom aid, they can provide us information to help us navigate our child's needs. I hope this can be implemented for the new school year, as this will help us parents and the teacher, as well as the aides, for better communication. Thank you.
Ashley.
Hello, my name is Ashley. I am a new parent in PUSD, and I am also here to speak in support of communication logs for special needs students. Both my children have IEPs. My son is a rising third grader in a special day class. My daughter is a rising kindergartner in a gen ed setting and receives RSP and other services. Despite having sent her IEP pre-enrollment and on her enrollment education, this employment or enrollment application, the Special Education Department did not provide her IEP to our school site until close to the end of the year, so they were unaware for most of the year that she came to PUSD with an IEP. I trusted that since I had provided the IEP multiple times, it would be implemented. Our school site caught the error, and now they're giving her her hours back, but having a daily communication log would have allowed that oversight to be caught sooner. I would have been getting regular communications and not just assuming it was being done. It would protect the district from being out of compliance with the IEP and allow the staff to give empirical evidence that they are providing services. By taking a little time, everyone will win. It also allows parents to know where our kids stand outside of a short conversation of pickup or drop off. I wasn't aware that my third grade, a rising third grader, remained at a kindergarten level this year until her, his IEP meeting two days before school ended. When I would ask how he was doing, I would usually get a grade or told a little bit about something he did that day. I was obviously aware he wasn't at grade level, but I was not, but I was really surprised to hear that there had been no positive progress in that direction this year. That shouldn't happen. Having regular updates would assist the teacher in keeping parents up to date about their children's goals and facilitate interested parents in being partners in their children's education. Thank you for your time.
Amber.
Hello, my name is Amber. My son, Michael, attends Don Benito Elementary. I'm here to speak about the daily communication logs. It's important to me that we can implement this for the new school year. We have had a lot of hiccups occur because of the lack of communication. This would help, this would not only benefit us parents, but it would also benefit our children, teachers and aides. So we're all on the same page. I really feel this would help me understand what goes on the day, as I can't ask my son how his day went. Definitely, daily logs will help our children to thrive and succeed. Thank you so much.
Dionne Harvey.
Good evening, Board. My name is Dionne Harvey, and I also have a comment regarding the CAC recommendation about the daily logs. As a parent of a special needs, a grandparent of a special needs child, I literally, we literally hand our child off to somebody, and we don't know for the next eight hours what happens in their life. We don't know what the scratch on your face is. We don't know why you have different clothes on than when I dropped you off at the bus. I don't know if you've eaten all day. Communication logs would help ease our fears about what's happening in their day and give us vital information that we need to help them, help the school, and help them. And I can't begin to reiterate the importance of knowing what's going on in their day. And I would really want to reiterate the importance of communication logs. I also want to comment, I was given another note to comment about, but we need to have more implementation and checks and balances instead of having another committee and another committing reports to no one. We need to stop and have an implementation and evaluation committee that does implementing and evaluating what our needs are and getting the things that we need done. So those are my comments, thank you.
Marilyn Myers.
Good evening. Hi, I'm here to speak about the facilities at John Muir High School. I was here several months ago and kind of spoke on the need for there to be proper restroom facilities and also just for the whole athletic field to really look a lot different than what it does. To me, it's an atrocity for Pasadena to have all of the high schools looking the way they do, their facilities, their activities, their athletic fields. I know Pasadena High School has had a lot of work done, but Muir has not. And it's, it's a really health issue for there not to be bathrooms at the athletic field, for there not to be a place to wash your hands. Food is being served, the whole field for where visitors and for also the parents and for the students to come is full of dirt. The seating is not in good condition. I noticed that there is an agenda item on here regarding the facilities there with the pool and gym. Also, there's some, there's some note about for restroom refresh, but my concern is there are no bathrooms. There's no reason for Pasadena, John Muir High School, to have porta-potties still there for each of their events. There's track events there, there's football events there, there's rugby events there, there's soccer events there, and there's no place to, to wash your hands. You know, this, this is something that shouldn't be. You know, I've gone, I mentioned before, I've gone to a lot of schools in the San Gabel Valley, and I have to say Pasadena is the worst as far as offering the proper health conditions that are needed at their athletic fields. As I said, I noticed PHS looks a lot different. Why doesn't John Muir look like PHS? Why doesn't John Muir have the proper facilities there for bathroom, for sanitation, for being able to? And it's just a disgrace. It's a disgrace for other communities to come there, other school districts to come there and have to be in those conditions while they're watching their children attend the athletic programs. I know there's supposed to be some renovations of the gym and the pool, but there needs to be also proper facilities for health reasons. Thank you.
Natalie Cortez.
Could I ask a clarifying question? A clarifying question during public comment? We certainly can. Oh, no, no, sorry, I'm sorry. It sounded like there was, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are adding a restroom building by the fields as part of the John Muir projects that is breaking ground? Is that? Okay, so that's true. So that is happening? Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Cortez. My son's name is Elijah. He is a new student to Don Benito Elementary. We came to the school in hopes of better communication. Due to his last school, my son fell victim from non-communication, which I won't go into detail, but I wish I could ask my son how his days go, but I can't. My son does a lot of repeating back. As a parent, it's very unsettling. If implemented, the daily communication logs are very important for us, parents who have kids who can't put into words. This would put us as parents more at ease. I want this changed not only for my child, but for every child like mine in our school district. As someone else said here, the scratches, the clothes, the tears in clothes. As a parent, it's the fear of the unknown. Thank you.
Yarmi Velasquez.
Hi, my name is Yarmi Velasquez, and I'm here in representation of all the families that are too afraid to be here tonight. It is with deep concern and disappointment with the leadership and how they've handled recent safety issues impacting our immigrant community. I believe that there is a serious failure in oversight, that we have not created a space for open and transparent discussion on a matter that is urgent and deeply affecting the lives of our students, families, and allies. If you ask anybody in this town, the most important issue impacting students this time is safety of our students, and that is not in the agenda. Yes, the superintendent issued a statement, yes, the chief of police came to speak as a public comment with the board, but in both of these actions happened without meaningful public engagement. Rather than inviting an open and honest discussion in front of the community, we have chosen not to. Board policy in alignment with the Brown Act allows board members to ask clarifying questions during public comedy, during public comment. This opportunity was not taken during our most recent visit by the chief of police. Now, more than ever, this community needs to ensure that public officers are protecting our students, our, those attending summer sessions, those taking public transportation alone because their parents are too afraid to leave, those participating in school events, those walking all around this city. Because if you drive around this city, you see a bunch of children alone walking through the city. We owe that to our youth and our families, and to be proactive and present. Thank you.
Student Board Member Report, Ms. G.
Thank you to President Hall Lee, Superintendent Dr. Blanco, and esteemed board members for your continued contribution and commitment to the Pasadena Unified School District and support to our student assembly. We would like to start by acknowledging the recent ICE raids that have invaded our community. From June 6th to this past Saturday, people took to the streets to practice their constitutional right to protest. Over the past two weeks, 4,000 military representatives were deployed not overseas, but to their own citizens despite opposition from our governor. These actions represent more than just policy decision. They are attack on democracy and the right to peaceful assembly. One of our team members, who will remain anonymous for safety reasons, shared their experience in the following quote. "With these ICE raids throughout LA County, I fear for my safety, of my families, my friends, and my community. Even as a US citizen, I fear being profiled and detained by ICE. In order to prevent such things from happening, I carry a copy of my passport, as I don't have California ID. My entire life has been affected by ICE. Not only was my father deported when I was five years old, my siblings and I were also afraid that my mother would be deported as she was undocumented. There are other students throughout the US who share similar experiences to mine, and my heart goes out to them and their families." This isn't just one story, it's the reality of many of our classmates, families, and friends, especially in a district like PUSD, where a large portion of students are Latinx, first gen, and undocumented or from mixed-status families. We would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the ongoing conflict in the Middle East. As students, we are watching with heavy hearts as violence continues to impact innocent civilians, particularly young people and families who, like us, deserve peace and safety. We sit down in solidarity with those affected and affirm that our belief in, no matter where you're from, you deserve to live without fear, oppression, or war. Now, more than ever, we need to recognize the importance of listening and empathy, two values that we learned from our circle training through the Western Justice Center, as well as through our own workshops and gatherings. Through the training, we recognize the power of understanding and our responsibility to promote peace, even when our governments have not. Despite these overwhelming injustices, students across the district are speaking of. They've expressed fear, grief, and empathy, but also a deep desire to stand for peace. We see each other, we comfort each other, and we are learning even now how to organize, support each other, and lead with compassion. Amid these heavy realities, we know that student leadership is more important than ever. Today concluded our Summer 2025 Student Think Tank and Assembly Summer Internship. In our three-week-long internship, a group of 25 students split between the Student Think Tank and Student Assembly, worked on three major committees, our now annual youth conference, Student Assembly elections, and our new marketing and outreach committee that is focused on highlighting student-led programs, achievements, and opportunities across our campuses to present the real image of PUSD to the larger community. As our 2025 Summer Internship ended this afternoon with a lunch, thank you to PEF, and visits from Student Think Tank and Student Assembly Council alumni, we would like to sincerely thank the district, our advisors, and fellow students for making this experience so meaningful. We learned so much, not only about leadership and policy, but about each other and our strength as a collective, and the importance of using our voice. Speaking of bittersweet endings, this meeting concludes my term alongside Tara Bondsmith, JP Ramirez, and Theo Ortega on serving on the Student Council. Thank you for giving us this platform for authentic student voice. Thank you for giving us this platform for authentic student voice and meaningful dialogue, and thank you to the Student Think Tank and this wonderful assembly for creating this wonderful assembly. Over the year, we've worked to build something that will, from the ground up, that will represent student voices and create a structure that will last far beyond us. We've learned how to advocate, how to listen, and how to collaborate, not just with each other and other youth leadership groups like the Student Think Tank, but also with adults who believe in amazing youth leadership. We are so proud of what we started and even more excited to pass this amazing experience to the next group of youth leaders. This foundation has been laid, and we can't wait to see how the Student Assembly continues to grow and help our district thrive. Thank you again for trusting us, for supporting us, and allowing us to be something bigger than ourselves.
So now we're on K, comments from labor unions. Who's coming up first, UTP?
Good evening, Student Board Member and Members of the Board, including Dr. Blanco. I come to you for last time this fiscal year, and I have some comments. I believe that if PUSD truly values their labor partners, they should match that with actions. However, this past year, there was a refusal to consider tangible UTP partnership despite other similar partnerships existing and existing in other districts. There was a refusal to pay for teachers to participate in summer interviews, even though admin time and others are paid for. Ignoring UTP input on the LCAP development in the last several years, especially this year, especially on the topic that central and admin positions should not be such a huge portion of our LCAP, and that there are school and classroom roles that are critical for us to consider to make sure that students get what they need at the school sites. We have ended what I believe was an unethical, um, budget year. Subtracting for fire costs, PUSD spent barely 45% of their budget on classroom instruction. This deprived students of around 150 to 200 teachers' worth of support. This breaks state law while on top of that, cutting or leaving limbo the 100 additional teachers that were laid off this year. For next year, the spending is still way below the 55% legal minimum. The budget document that you're going to be approving likely today says that you will be planning to spend 40% on classroom instruction. This is $49 million underfunding classroom instruction. On the same budget document, there's 195 management supervisor and confidential FTE positions, which is nearly double that of our peer districts. There are $102 million in contracted services planned to be spent for next year versus $105 million total on all certificated salaries. That includes admin and certificated non-management like UTP. In addition, this whole year, um, we've seen contract violations. HR deprived a member of PD time and forced them to work longer hours with no compensation. HR involuntarily transferred a more senior teacher over a teacher with less seniority. HR refused to publish vacancy lists or share necessary and relevant information with UTP, which deprived us of the ability to fully support and represent our members during the heartbreak of layoffs. PUSD can do better in '25, '26. PUSD educators have been left to dry and to self-fund their classrooms, their materials, and their own learning. We need better feedback from teachers, we need better systems to receive that, we need better feedback and systems to receive feedback from parents. We need to find ways to empower all interest holder voices, including the Student Think Tank and others who are closest to the learning and can speak to all of what's going on. Students, schools, and not central office careers should be at the core. These are my comments, and I hope that next year, there will be a lot better news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who's next? Teamsters.
So, I'd like to first acknowledge, uh, Student Board Member, very impressive. Good evening, President Lee, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Blanco, Superintendent Leadership Team Members, and Members of the Audience. I don't know if the Board knows, but my local recently merged with a larger local, and we are now Teamsters Local 986. We are the biggest local in the Teamsters International at 30,000 members strong. I've stood before you on several occasions promoting the benefit of Teamsters being team players and working with the district to improve the working conditions for my members. We believe we've had a good reputation of collaboration, and our actions have provided benefits and support for the district. With that being said, it is unfortunate, and I believe disrespectful, when our recommendations are not being considered. I need to be aware of all my membership and the impacts that they will have on the, uh, that they will have to deal with after decisions made by the district without our input. These decisions result in collateral damage that affect many of my members. I want to give you a heads up that as a result of the Business Department leadership decision, it may lead to some complaints coming once again from Nutrition Services employees. Although your current Nutrition Services interim leadership is good and they're doing, uh, the best they can with the limited support they have received to this point, the problem stems from the warehouse. The warehouse is shared with three separate departments, Nutrition Services, Procurement, and Curriculum. Teamsters negotiated a classification utility warehouse worker to allow the employees to work together in all three departments when there was a need. We included a lead position for this classification to help management coordinate these employees to work together and reinstate them as necessary, so a sub would not have to be hired, saving the district money. Lead made sure all routes were covered and created food delivery routes to school sites that were more time-efficient and timely and create food delivery routes to schools to all drivers the best way to plan their day. The drivers are happy since they didn't have to do more than one trip to deliver the same school site. Nutrition Service, uh, Nutrition Service workers were happy because they received the food they needed for the students. Unfortunately, this is not taking, uh, this is currently not taking place, for the summer feeding program is having problems, so I can't imagine when school begins that it's just going to get worse. The district recently hired a new employee to fill the lead position. This position should be able to coordinate the work, as I explained above, while overseeing and coordinating the three departments for management. Unfortunately, I believe management set up the new lead for failure. With no experience doing the job, there was no one available to teach them, since everybody is new. Management overlooked two candidates with 20-plus years of warehouse experience and leadership experience. Since they did not understand the complexities of the job that was needed to be done, this has caused major problems and violations in the warehouse resulting in food not being delivered in a timely manner, the summer feeding program facing problems, and unnecessary subs being hired costing the department more money. Unfortunately, one of the candidates that was being performing this work for over a year without compensation is a Teamster shop steward. As a Teamster business agent, I have no choice but to file an unfair labor charge on behalf of my shop steward due to union retaliation. I have spoken to management, and they understand that I need to support my member. If any of you would like further details on the individual basis, please let me know. As I stated in the beginning of the speech, Teamsters are always willing to work with the district in improving the working conditions and procedures, but they need to understand that many of their employees have the experience and expertise to make the department run more efficiently. Teamsters do not want to decide to who to hire or how to run a department, but when management does not have the experience or knowledge, it is okay to ask for help. We all have the same goal in mind. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here? Labor unions? Is that it? Okay. Then that's it. All right. So we're going to move to staff presentation. Number one, 24, 25 local indicators.
Good evening, President Hall Lee, Board Members, Staff. So along with our LCAP metrics, academic metrics, we also have local indicators. The local indicators are largely staff reflection on these different priority points. There are five priority points, they're listed differently, but I will go through them all. These go along, these are metrics that we, that will indicate progress or areas that we need to improve in our LCAP. The first one is basic services. So there are three reported areas here, but basically this is our student-to-staff ratio in different areas. All of this information is public. We are using data that is reported through CalPads. It's two years old, but that is the data we have that has been verified to report on our LCAP. The next priority, priority two, is the implementation of state standards. This self-reflection is done primarily through our Curriculum and Instruction Department. As you can see, we're doing, it breaks down the subject areas. We are doing a really great job in making materials available in all classrooms. There is definitely room for some improvement in our professional learning for teaching and implementation of our programs. Some of this is due to new curriculum and that professional development, and then implementation that goes along with that. Priority two is implementation of other state standards. So here's where we report, um, our CTE, Career Technical Education, Health Education, Physical Education, VAPA, and World Language. And for each of them, we also report on professional development in areas for those teachers to improve their practice. You can see in these areas, we are doing, uh, pretty well with our implementation and the use of standards in each of these classrooms. Priority three, this is one that we report on quite often throughout the LCAP, and this is parent involvement and engagement. I pulled out just a few pieces for you and for the public to, to look at. These are the areas that we self-reflect on. There's also a narrative that goes along with it, any of you who have looked at the actual reports. In these areas, we definitely have some areas that we're doing very well in, creating welcoming environments for our families, seems to get top ratings. An area for improvement is providing professional learning and support for some of our families, and that may not be due to the resources that we have provided, but it may be due in part to the communication and how we, how parents then access those learnings. Priority six is school, school climate. A lot of this information we get from our Panorama survey that is sent out to staff, students, parents, and community members. Our staff results, there was a 15% increase in positive responses to school safety, so we feel like that's a win. And this, the Panorama survey, is open all the way through May, so some of, this is based on the latest reporting. There is an 8% increase in a sense of belonging, which after the, the fires, we're actually very proud of those numbers, that families felt like they were safe at school and they felt a sense of belonging. Teacher survey, there is 10% increase in positive, in feeling positively about school safety, and for our teaching staff, a 6% increase in a sense of belonging. And some of the family survey results, there was a 7% increase in reporting of a positive school climate. Some areas we're going to focus on next year are increase in overall response rates. The goal is 90% participation from our families. That way, we are getting a brighter, a broader swath of, of input, and we always want to continue to improve that sense of belonging. So priority seven, access to a broad course of study. This, this is one of the local indicators that we've had a lot of discussions with, in particular, our LCAP PAC. But right now, the, to give you an idea of what the broad course of study is, is making sure that all of our students have access to all of the courses. So what we do is we individually look at our courses and what the makeup of those courses are based on every subgroup imaginable and every subgroup that we report on. So we're looking to make sure that there is a balance of students who have access to those courses. What we found is, it's very similar to last year. We've definitely found that our English learners lack access in a lot of our AP IB courses, and that, um, that the access for this remains through master scheduling. We've made a lot of improvements at Blair in particular, because they now have IB for all courses, so a lot of our English learners are showing up in those IB courses. It's our AP courses that we need to take a closer look at. And again, all of the full reports are available and public. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Ms. Kenny?
Thank you. Um, I enjoyed reading the broad course of study. I did. Um, the question I had on the teacher assignments, so I think I remember last year what happened is the state finally released year-old data in the middle of the summer. Remind me, when are the, um, when do the local indicators have to be posted? Is it in the fall?
I believe it is in the fall, yes.
If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, I think what we did is when they finally came out, we updated with the most current, is that something we can do again?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, I don't know why. They are running a year behind, but it would be great to have up-to-date data.
Yeah, and, and our HR can, um, come up with a more recent, but this is just what we report on the LCAP.
And, and then my only comment was on the instrument itself, or when we load it up to the website, we'll, because that link takes you to the state-level data. We'll put the actual numbers.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
And then on the climate survey, can you help me? Because I, I saw that we are doing something in the spring, something in the fall, but when you say growth, is it from spring to spring, or are you measuring growth from fall to sprig? I'm trying to do...
It is fall to spring, so we're measuring it like a pre-post.
Okay, so we're not...
Within one year's time, it's not a year, a one-year-over.
It is fall to...
It is, because we wanted to be able to get, when we start to do the work, we're getting like the temperature of what's happening, and then within all the actions and all the opportunities that we provide throughout the year, then we measure what was the impact of doing those types of things. And being able to have the student voice is actually a newest component, because we used to do the universal screener, which was only adult-led, so now being able to have a very 360 view from all parties in PUSD has been more powerful.
And is that data broken down by different student groups?
It can be.
Oh, yeah. Panorama's amazing.
But have we seen that, I guess is what I'm wondering?
Yes, we have access to that.
So the Board has...
All the schools, all the school sites do too.
But the Board has seen it, or it's available somewhere where we can find it? That's what I'm asking.
We can work on something.
Yeah, we can do a Board communication.
So when we load up, or when we put in the local indicator, we're just doing overall district, not broken down?
Yes.
Because I thought it said, you know, break it down into demographic groups if you can.
But the school sites can do their own breakdown too, so...
I'm talking about for the local indicator for what we...
You can, yes.
All right, so that's possible. Great.
Yes, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you for presentation. The part about...
The part about secondary school students, their sense of belonging increased by two percent. What does that say to you?
Well, again, like Dr. Reynoso indicated, it's from fall to spring. So that increase of two percent, I mean, if you're just asking me, I feel like after the, after the fires, school was a place where our secondary students felt like they had normalcy. But that's, you know, that's my interpretation of, of that data.
And then, how do we treat this not just as a compliance activity? And really own this as an opportunity to, for continuous improvement? Their next steps, state the master scheduling techniques and prioritizations, improve reclassification rates for before ninth grade, and working with school counselors to ensure programming fits needs of students and allows students access to higher-level courses. Is that operationalized and checked and analyzed and reviewed? How often is that?
Yeah, so you're talking about priority seven, which is separate from the, the school and community data? You wanted me to address priority seven?
Oh, I thought I was-
So-
Slide eight.
Yeah, so with, with our broad course of study, that's something that we, we have a course codes committee. So that's something that we look at on a monthly basis, is our students' access to those courses. And that was feedback that Blair had been given. So they actually changed their entire schedule and worked very hard with the course coding, course code committee this year to make sure that more students have access to IB courses, which is a process. They have to get those courses approved, we have to give new course codes to them. So it is definitely data on the secondary side that we look at on a very regular basis.
And actually, you brought up the Blair example because it's talking about the English learners are underrepresented in AP courses. And the part about, part of this may be due to the need for students to participate in the designated English language development courses. So the part I was wondering about is maybe due to. So do we know if that's the cause, or part of it is that's the cause? Are we not asking students?
So at our high school level, some of the students were not programmed into their ELD courses. And we are in a, so yes, that was a survey done with the counselors and through our ELD, our LAD coordinator. He came and, and spoke to the counselors and tried to figure out what was happening with our LTAL students in secondary and, you know, with, with the access for our ELD students. And this was something that they all came up with and a new course of action for, for next year.
So the counselors were surveyed?
Yes, yeah. You know, working session.
Anybody else? Mr. Harden?
So in priority three, page six, some of the areas of improvement, I think, you know, are, are in, in specific subject areas where, you know, possibly opportunities exist to lean into some of our parent, parent groups a little bit. You know, we've been sort of tackling the subject, I know, in some of the, in some of the groups about training and train the trainers, so to speak, so that the parent groups can take some, especially as we know tough times ahead in terms of our resources at the central office to kind of lean, lean into some groups that, that can help specifically in areas of helping fellow families understand their, their rights and advocate, you know, for their own student. You know, family engagement is not just about showing up at the school site and, and helping out at the bake sale, but also giving these parents the tools to, to advocate for their own children at, at home. And, and so there may be some opportunities there to improve these numbers. I'd be also interested about how community schools are fair, you know, this is a, this is a aggregated number, but are we seeing better returns at community school sites in some of these areas?
Yeah, that, that'd be interesting data, and if so directed, we could get that.
Okay.
I would actually, thank you for this, by the way, and for all of your work. But I would actually be interested in seeing comparison data. Because when I look at, for instance, school climate and you're talking about the survey results and you're talking about the ten percent increase in positive responses to school safety from the teachers, what is that compared to? When you're talking about access, or for instance, the LLs and then the next group, the socio-economically disadvantaged students, you know, what did that look like last year versus what it looks like now? So when we get this data next year, it would be interesting, interesting to be able to see side by side at least, you know, two to three years worth of data here. So that we can tell clearly that we're, either we're improving or we're not improving. Because for me, when I, when I see this, I just, with the same group always being the disadvantaged groups year in and year out on every dataset that we look at, it's, I'm becoming really numb. And now I want to, I want to see us dig deeper and really go in and produce some numbers so that we can see how we're progressing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any, anybody else? No?
Is something that, like what Ms. Bailey's looking for, is that if we looked at metric three point one, where it has a student perception of school safety in the LCAP? Because it has year over, this is year over year.
It has our baseline, it has our year-one results, and then it has a, a space for the difference. So that's one year of data. It's in the LCAP, yeah.
It's in the LCAP itself, right, right.
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Dr. Turin, thank you very much. Mr. Bravo Karimi, capital bond program update.
All right, so this is a presentation that was shared with the facilities committee, and it's the result of the good work of the facilities team under Mr. Mike Dunning's leadership, but I'll be presenting it tonight. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through it a little bit quick, more quickly than normal. So first, starting with the vision statement for the investments that we're making in facilities. So safe, modern, and inspiring school environments, fiscal responsibility through the efficient, through efficient project delivery, building institutional knowledge within the district, aligning facility design with instructional goals and community equity. And so this is what kind of informs our decisions, our practices within the facilities department. And you'll see alignment over the next several slides with, with these vision statements. So just a quick summary, I'm not going to go through every bullet point, but on the left you'll see the many projects that we have that are in active construction at this time, totaling over seventy-six million dollars. You will see the John Muir High School project that was discussed a little bit earlier tonight there at the top of the left-hand side, as well as other important improvements to our campuses. On the right-hand side, you'll see those that will be breaking ground soon, including the Madison and Longfellow Modernization Projects, as well as projects at Marshall and Pasadena High School. And then we have projects that are currently in design, and this is over eighty-six million dollars worth of projects. And so you, you'll see there, at any given time with a facilities program the size of ours, you'll have projects in active construction, projects about to break ground, projects in the design phase. And this is going to be very common over the next several years as we continue to make progress in improving our facilities. So here you'll see many of the projects that we have right now in design, including Don Benito. And then at the bottom, you'll see our, our staff housing project. So other important work in addition to those projects that are in different phases is updating our vendor procurement. So what we've recently awarded is several services, including inspection services, geotechnical services, and some upcoming procurements, which include the creation of a bench for architects, consultant for our, the development of our energy master plan, as well as pools for both program management and project management. Initially, we're building a digital foundation, so we have a lot of historical data. We have a lot of documents, but we want to continue to build on that, kind of using modern technology. So we've already awarded for the development of a digital design guide, as well as a district-wide campus surveys. And underground utility scans are procured and ongoing. And what's also in procurement is a digital archive of ASBILTS and other important kind of digitalization of, of our program. And so these are just examples of the way that we are continuing to make the program, the department more modern and to have the kind of information that will help us execute on our projects more efficiently. So also, you know, obviously we've had bond funds before, and we've made a lot of progress, and, and we were very fortunate for the voters to approve an additional nine-hundred million dollars in November. And we're really focusing post-fire on enabling some early wins. So one area of focus is on strategic staffing of the department. So we are exploring different positions and we're striking the right balance between in-house employees as well as contracted professionals. It's very common practice at districts that have the good fortune of having bond funds to have a mix of, of internal employees and contracted professionals. And we know that we're going to need to rely on both moving forward. Another example of potential early win would be energy efficiency upgrades, as well as district-wide safety enhancements such as fire alarms, security entries, et cetera. Something also under consideration is improvements to the district service center, which is kind of the home base of the teams that are executing on all this work. And so an example of a potential upgrade there would be infrastructure to charge electric vehicles. We know the board passed a resolution to green the fleet. And so there are certain improvements that are going to be necessary to make those board resolutions a reality. So here are just some, some preliminary ideas. As folks know, when we are managing a program the size of ours, it is very important to get community feedback, stakeholder feedback. Of course, ultimately, the board decides on the priorities and the projects that we undertake. But here's some early thinking in advance of that project before it plays out on some potential areas that we might invest some of those Measure R funds. So of course, additional campus modernization projects at the top of the list on the top left there. Continued modernization of our, of our vehicle fleet. Continued refreshing of our technology for both students and staff, as well as core IT infrastructure. The staff housing project is already well underway, which was again intended to be funded with Measure R. It was part of the ballot language. Replacing of furniture, fixture, and equipment, what we call FFNE. That's kind of classroom furniture, lab equipment, administrative equipment, athletic field. So these are just some, some kind of large categories of the types of areas where we would likely invest many of the Measure R funds. Now again, there's going to be a process, there's going to be an opportunity to gather feedback to continue to build off of the progress that we've made under previous bond measures and as we continue to make under Measure O. Sorry for talking so fast, but we also have a budget presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have anything? I'm sure you do. Any hands raised, Ms. Kenny?
I just wanted to clarify something because I thought I saw last night a report where it said that the Marshall Fundamental Athletic Field is starting this summer, or is it starting next summer? Marshall Field. And the reason I ask is because it's here for expanded scope, but if it was starting sooner rather than later, that's where I got confused.
Right, so we're tying in both the restroom renovation and the Marshall Field together. So we're starting with the Marshall restroom renovation now. We're replacing the main utility lines and things, that's why the summer school was mostly shut down. And then we'll be moving into the field renovations once all the surveying and architectural plans start coming back and engineers get a chance to look.
But it still could, it could expand in scope?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, I wasn't clear if that timeline then would be affected, potentially pushing it out if the scope changes, and that's why?
Marshall would be a continued phase project. There's no way to relocate them anywhere to any kind of temporary housing, so.
All right, thank you. Just on the vision page, I don't know if this is something that's kind of a, a work in progress, if you're open to input, because I, I was trying to figure out how to word something along the lines of making our decisions based on our student needs slash population. And, you know, when I was looking at the potential project page, I was like, you know, do our science facilities need some kind of upgrades? I don't know when the last time we touched a lot of our science facilities or our CTE facility. You know, in other words, are we kind of taking the programs and the students and where all those are happening and really folding that in? And I was just, maybe that has a place in the vision statement?
Yes, we are always open to feedback, thank you.
Mr. Harden, then you.
So briefly, this, this report came to us in facilities, and I thought it was excellent, I think we all did. And so I'm glad that we're bringing this forward to the board meeting because it does, and it would be nice to have this kind of a report as maybe a periodic thing that comes to the public because it's nice to sort of expand what, for the public's benefit, what is part of the, the bond dollars. And so very helpful and appreciate the, the, the explanation. It may, you know, in, in the future, it might be helpful, I think, you know, some of the feedback we've talked about as a timeline or something like that, where we can kind of, you know, for the visual people that can see these projects, at least the main, you know, epics can be kind of laid out, you know, on a, on a timeline that, that encapsulates some of the smaller items. And then, you know, just as this prompts us, as we think toward the future of, as we look at the, at the Measure R funds in bulk, that, that, you know, encouragement of my colleagues to engage in, in a longer-term kind of planning process so that, you know, holistically, we're thinking about post-Measure O enhancements sort of collectively as we plan the district's future. That's it.
Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you for the presentation. And yes, I recognize that this came directly from the committee, as is. I think I have a similar kind of critique, and I, I hate to criticize the team that's so hardworking, but I'm good with sort of, like we, as a board, approved a five-year bond program plan, and that was sort of laid out in a sort of timeline and the sites and the costs. And I guess I kind of want to know, well, obviously we've shifted our timeline because of the fire, but whether we are within budget roughly for each of the sites. And it's hard to kind of look at that and go, oh, we're still within plus minus of whatever we had originally approved. So I, that's the sort of breakdown I would like to see. It's hard to see with just sort of a snapshot. But in general, are we, in general, within the budget? Plus, we have our insurance money that covers maybe some extras. Can you kind of summarize a little bit?
Yeah. The intention of this is not so much to bring you up to speed. We're still working down our five-year plan, nothing's changed there on everything that's approved. The intention here is to start the conversation as we're looking at laying outlay for all of the rest of Measure R. We've, we've brought to the board a few items, and those conversations are starting, need to be had on how we're going to lay out the rest of the plan properly, right? So this is the beginning of that. It's a bit of a temperature check to see reactions and what you, we're presenting as potential projects. So far, it's been well-received, which means that we'll start looking down those avenues to get these projects some early starts while we get it, that'll give us some time to have longer discussions on where the rest of the bond money will be spent.
So just kind of throwing out ideas?
A bit, yeah.
Secondly, sorry, just one more thing. I went, we, I went to a conference, one of our CSPIA conferences, and they said the second most expensive budget item, second to staffing, is utilities. Can you kind of confirm that? Can you kind of confirm that that is the case for us, or no?
Can't confirm it's second, I can confirm it's a substantial portion of the contracted services that were highlighted earlier tonight, and that the cost of utilities has increased substantially over time.
So I, I'm glad to see that we are looking at energy efficiency to then bring down the cost of utilities, and maybe you know about the 2020, in 2022, the board had passed a resolution on the recognition of global climate emergency and urgency to take local action, to source 100% carbon-free energy in the city. So I'm glad we are making that effort, and I know that there are community groups in this, in Pasadena that are very interested in collaborating with us, so is there interest in, in that open dialogue?
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue the longstanding PUSD tradition of community engagement.
Dr. Velazquez.
Thank you. I, I am too supportive of the idea of the energy efficient upgrades as a way to support educational outcomes. In fact, I would like to center all of our conversations in how are we helping students improve educational outcomes? And if we are investing in something so that we can free out funds for educational outcomes, I'm all for it. And because we're throwing away, we're throwing out ideas about how to improve, and as part of energy efficient and critical repairs, we should strongly consider windows, which are issue of conversation at many of the schools that I visit, including Hamilton. They receive me and say, we want windows, great to you, great that you're here, we want windows, lovely parade, windows. So it would be nice to both support utilities, infrastructure, critical repairs, and energy efficient by replacing some of the windows in this district. I also want to bring to the attention of everybody in the community that in page four, there's a proposal of $15 million investment in Franklin, a school that before the fires was empty. It's a $15 million, and we're later going to vote on this, which is actually not $15 million, but $17 million. And I am deeply concerned about the investment of that amount of money in a school that didn't have children before the fire, and were only going to use as a swing space, when simultaneously we have schools that were also impacted, like the fire, like Don Benito, that's getting $6.8 million, where students are currently residing. And so I think that that is problematic in terms of the, how we are looking at our priorities. And I mentioned it in our facilities meeting, and I want to remind everybody that that is still my position of this wonderful presentation. $15 million, $17 million in that facility is not a good use of insurance money when we know and data supports that we are going to need a lot of mental health support for all of the students in our district. And that allocation of insurance money could be used for services to improve student outcomes, which is the number one goal of this school district and all school districts. And so I want to make a strong case against moving forward with this, and I will make sure that is, that is reflected in my vote later this evening.
Yes, Superintendent.
Sorry, I forgot to look at my notes. My last note was, I'm very active in the pool exercise community in this town, and there was some expressed concern about the renovation of multiple pools at the same time, and how we are going to use the resources, and how students are going to do swimming and water polo if multiple of our pools are in renovation at the same time, leaving only Blair not in the, available for practices and this and that and da-da-da. And so I am concerned about the timeline shown in this presentation, right? And I know that we're going through tough times, and we have an ambitious agenda, and then I'm thinking, in tough times, we maybe should do less with less.
Superintendent, did you want to say something?
No.
You don't? I thought you did, and then we're gonna...
I did, I was just gonna say, if we're, if we're going to vote for not to improve our swing spaces, that we should have some alternative plans and creative ideas on where we will put the children while we're renovating their schools.
Ms. McKenzie.
So I'm looking at the projects that are listed in kind of active construction, schedules to break ground in '26, and projects that are in design. And from what my memory serves, these are primarily the projects that were outlined in our initial kind of five-year plan, the kind of the first, you know, maybe one to two and a half years roughly. So to my knowledge, we have not necessarily made any new decisions yet about projects or made any new commitments yet. And just based on the timeline of things to have to sort of like, make it through design, through construction, planning, and then actually breaking ground, and then actually going through kind of completion and final, like, certificate of occupancy, there's some other time that sort of follows those steps once you complete those things. I, I do think that the fire does put us in a position to have to think about sort of, is the remainder of the plan something that we want to be able to keep intact, or do we need to modify, or how do we modify? I think those are conversations that are worth having. Something else I might want to add to, like, potential projects to consider are cafeteria upgrades. Because if we are trying to figure out how to improve the quality of food service, the efficiency of food service, being able to prepare food on-site will help us with that challenge. And I think that where I see us right now is have to think about sort of what are the kind of imminent needs that we have facilities-wise, and then how do we kind of think about some blacksmiths planning to determine how do we support the needs of our campuses? Like, for example, what modifications might need to be done at Altadena to return students there when that time comes? What is the plan for Elliott? And how do we think about what that reconfiguration or reimagining redesign looks like? What are our plans overall in terms of looking at our education master plan, to Dr. Velazquez's point about centering student outcomes? And what components of that ed master plan align with this facilities plan? And where do you make the shift so that those things are kind of walking together? The other thing that I will just say for the public benefit is that I've heard a lot of chatter in the community about, we have all this bond money. Bond money can only be spent on facilities, technology, and infrastructure. Can't spend it in the classroom, can't spend it on salaries, can't spend it on other kinds of costs. So I think we have to sort of continue to educate our constituents about what dollars are used for what purposes, so that there's not a confusion or a misunderstanding about why are we sitting on X number of dollars when we are saying that we have a deficit. But thank you to the facilities team for all that you all do, this is not easy work, and it's not quick work either.
I have a question, and it is about buildings and student achievement, and the amount of work that's gone into studying this for a lot of decades. And now, as we go to the topic of rightful presence of all children of varying abilities, how new design takes in the fact that we want inclusive spaces for all, so it just comes down to wider hallways, all sorts of access. So as, as we look at the future and where we're going as a school district, that the combination of design and architecture and student achievement come together. And can you talk a little bit about that? I know it's a little early for that, but maybe just a few sentences.
Yeah, just briefly, so, so, yes, absolutely. Elliott's a good example of where there, after such a tragic loss, there'll, there'll be an opportunity to build it back better, including in the ways that you described. And so not only are there legal requirements to do so, but certainly as part of our design, it's going to take into account ways that we can make it more accessible than it was before. You know, it was built a long time ago where the standards were very different, so that's just a really good example of, of a project where we'll be able to realize what you described.
Thank you, and the Superintendent has something.
We did take a lot of consideration in the educational master plan meetings, and we did get input from parents and the staff on how we want to make sure the buildings are prepared to serve all children, including children with disabilities and IEPs.
Excuse me, did you have something to say?
Those are the principles of universal design, that is not new.
We know it's not new, but it's nice to talk about it, because this is a pretty important topic. Ms. Kenny.
Something perhaps not for tonight, but when we come back and have a larger conversation. So in speaking about the educational master plan, my understanding was that we could, you know, we had choices when we did our first five-year bond plan, renovations or modernization. And the modernization left the walls intact and didn't really change our schools into the kinds of places that we were outlining in the educational master plan, that would be a renovation. So I don't know when we'll talk about, you know, now that we have additional money, because certainly when we only had Measure O, that was not a feasible conversation, but I would be interested in if we will be talking about renovations as well.
I think that wraps us up, thank you very much. All right, so now we're moving to Dr. Charlie Payne, and approval of the 2526 LCAP, thank you.
I'm hoping the board, public, had an opportunity to look at our LCAP for this next year. There were, from the draft that you have, we did make some changes based on necessity and based on input, and I'll highlight some of those. In our plan summary, there were some demographic updates that have happened in order to accurately portray our demographics, that's just in the summary page. And then there was a narrative in the additional concentration funds that we added, and that basically states we're using our additional concentration funds to focus on our EL students, implement the MTSS coaches, and, and make sure that we are improving services for our homeless students through our families in transition. So that's the narrative, but all of that was indicated in the, in the LCAP, it was just the narrative for that particular piece. You can see from the LCAP that our work this year is focused on academic recovery, equity-based interventions, and making sure that our students are engaged, connected, and supported across all school sites. We have listed many of our improvements through student metrics, some of which are A through G, the increase in A through G, Rose City under our equity multiplier. Gold saw an increase in our graduation rates for those students. We saw a particular increase in their English learner and socio-economically disadvantaged students graduating from high school, so that was wonderful. We do know that there is a lot of work that still needs to be done, particularly for our LTALs, our long-term English learners, for our Black students, and for our foster youth and students with disabilities, that's work that we will continue to do. We're proud of the progress, we are definitely clear-eyed about the work in front of us. So staff recommends that the LCAP be approved.
Any questions from anyone? Ms. Kenny.
I want to say thank you for moving some of the base and supplemental concentration funds around so that the LCAP just more clearly shows which funds are being used for contributing actions. I really appreciate that, I think that will help our parents in the community better understand how we're using those important funds. I mean, the main item that, with the S and C is just the $2 million that we're still using for special education, which is, because it's one big item, it's marked as non-contributing. And I think some of the discussion I've had with other PAC members was that it would be helpful to clarify what services or which students those funds are being used, and how to measure their effectiveness. And I appreciate the data metric cleanup as well. One of my concerns is about the decrease in funding for supporting English learners. The Goal VII funding has been cut by about a third from last year. You know, part of that is because instead of having dedicated EL coaches, they're encapsulated back into Goal I. And we've also, it looks like shifted some of our learning recovery block grant spending, we had $17 million over three years, but we only have three of it this last year, so we kind of accelerated it, and that initially had been there for the RTI wellness coaches, so that was kind of reallocated. One of the things is, I don't think that a lot of Measure J or any of Measure EE, I think it's only $3 million of Measure J, are like in the LCAP, and is there a way that we can find another method to communicate to the public how those very, you know, those taxpayer contribution funds are being used? And I don't know if that's later in the year, sometime at a presentation, so that there's continuity and people can say, oh, yeah, you know, we voted for that parcel tax, and those are where those funds are going.
Yeah, I can address one of the first things that you said. A lot of the feedback from the CSAC, Foster Youth, and LCAP PAC is the idea that we are using that supplemental concentration funding within special education, and we are aware of, of that, and, and aware of the need to break that down a little further. We wanted to make sure that we had consultation on the metrics to do that and to involve all staff before we made any of those changes this year, but the LCAP is a living document, so we feel that that's something we can definitely address next year. As far as reporting out on Measure J and Measure EE, I will defer to Mr. Bravo Karimi on how we might be able to do that in the future.
The question was, is it possible for it to be reported on? The answer is yes, it is possible.
And maybe we can discuss how to do that?
Yes.
So, Ms. Kenny, you had a request about explaining money from EE?
Both Measure J and EE. So in other words, I mean, there's a big budget document, but people can't really tell where...
You want to just tell the public where that money's going for this year?
Well, I'm saying I think the public would be interested, I mean, if...
Is that something you want, is that something that the board has to agree on? So the board should agree on this?
It should.
It does happen anyway, when does it happen? Mr. Saman?
I think, if I understand correctly, I think what's being asked is kind of a separate reporting of specifically those funds, because they are of particular interest to the public, whereas, you know, admittedly, our financial documents are not the easiest to read.
Be hefty.
Yeah. So I, is that...
So this is, means we're, so we're asking staff to produce this, and then we're going to digest it and talk to the public, or put it on the... to digest it and talk to the public or put it on the website? Or how does this work?
For, for the Measure J, I believe there is already an annual report, so that could be a starting point, and we can modify it to the extent it would be beneficial for the public's understanding. And then for the parcel tax, obviously, we have not received any revenue yet. We, we expect to receive it next year. And so we can think on how it might be presented.
So.
If the board, if the board agrees.
The board has to agree on this because we're requesting a report, basically.
Point of information, is this a Friday communique, or is this going to be like an agenda?
I think a Friday communique is kind of nice.
Is that what you're thinking?
Because we can digest.
It's really for the public, so it's, it's not necessarily for us, per se. It's like, I'm assuming there'd be community interest in where those funds are going. And again, because it's not in the LCAP. If it was already in the LCAP, then we would just say, you know.
It's like a website post or something.
And then, you know, in the future, does it become part of budget materials? You know, like this year it could be in the communique, but in the future?
So.
Point of information, Mr. Bravo Karimi, don't we already capture our Measure J dollars in our budget document that gets submitted to Laco and the state ultimately through their, the Saks codes? Like, do you have to, because the money there?
It's all, yeah. Every dollar, yes, is, is included in those, in those forms.
So are we just asking for an easier way to say on, you know, page 46 or whatever page number that it lives on, that this is where you find Measure J dollar expenditures? Is that what we're asking for? Or is something, it might understand that you want something different than that?
There isn't anything in the budget that says this is the expenditures that are coming out of Measure J in this budget document, in the Saks. There isn't anything. It would have to be produced. It's deep in the budget system, but it's not in here. No one could find it even if they tried really hard.
That's right. That's right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be us, we wouldn't be able to refer somebody to a page number because the Saks forms, while they're voluminous, hefty, they are still a roll-up of all, a lot of detail is rolled up, even though it's many, many pages. It, it, you know, it's like general fund unrestricted, it's like all together, general fund restricted, it's all together. And so you wouldn't be able to determine more detailed level, a more granular level than, than that, from the forms that are submitted to Laco.
So then we're asking for separate documents. So this is something we're all going to have to decide on here.
Can it live on a web page somewhere? I mean, I don't think it has to be a, a whole big document.
I think I'm trying to understand the, the ask, output of the request, and then its intended purpose once it's produced. It's your request.
You're making the request.
Yeah.
So I, I'm assuming, and maybe I'm incorrect, that taxpayers would like to know where this money goes. And we did meet with the city when they gave us the Measure J money and say, these are the priority areas where we're going to spend it. And, and a lot of them had to do with IB and signature programs, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, the initial one was make sure your ending balance isn't zero, because that's when we first started getting this money, it was very close to that. Now we've gone kind of away from that. But we do have to do a report to the city saying what we've spent it on. It's sometimes early in the year when we haven't finally decided exactly how we're spending it. But that's not, I don't know that that goes to the public in any kind of way. And then Measure EE, I just, again, we're already getting requests to pass another bond in the, in the newspapers.
Wait, what? What, 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 what? Who's doing what?
Somebody, there's public opinion out there saying, why don't you just ask for more money? And so I'm assuming someone's going to say, but where's the money going that we already gave them?
But wait, 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 let's not. This is, this is one thing in a newspaper that someone wrote?
That's okay.
I don't think, right. So.
So my, I just have.
Mr. Harden and then.
A quick suggestion that we have a budget section within our website that is starting to have some structure to it that I sort of like. So maybe as a stopgap for, until we find a more permanent place for it to live, it's, it's a, it's a link on that, on that section. So then we can link to it if we want to have a conversation about it, if we want to prove to the city whatever our means are for showing how we're spending that money, then it's easy access. That's my recommendation.
So I am inclined to agree with, with Kim on this, especially as far as transparency is concerned, that I believe we owe it to the community to show the breakdown of the expenditures for those measures. And again, I think that it could live on a website, which is easier for folks to access. And if they want to include it in, you know, the last page of the budget report or whatever, I mean, that's fine too, because, I mean, I've been hearing that it was going into the reserves. So there's a lot being said about where those funds are going that is not factual or it's not true. And I haven't inquired because I knew that it was all included in the overall budget. And so, but I did not realize that we weren't showing a breakdown.
So it sounds like we might have consensus here on this, because I'm, I'm sort of inclined also, because we want to pierce the misinformation in the world. And if there's misinformation on this money that we've asked for, maybe we should do this. I don't, Patrice does not seem convinced.
Can I just make one point? I, I agree, it's, it's important to demonstrate to the public how we're using the valuable resources that they've approved for use. When it comes to unrestricted general fund revenue, though, I just want to make a, an analogy that makes it a little bit difficult. If there's a family that has two incomes, let's say my wife and I, we have, we each have an income, and you said I'd make a report of what Saman's income was spent on and what my wife's income was spent on. It doesn't work that way. Our income was pooled together, and, and then we pay our mortgage, and we, we pay for groceries. And so it can, I mean, I, we can think on it and come, and come up with a recommendation, but it could be, if I were to come up with a, a report of what my income was spent on, it would be somewhat arbitrary of the expenses of the household that we do. So.
So.
I just want to.
All right.
But Saman, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We just want to move forward.
My question is, when those funds come in, do they go to a certain line item or do they just go into the general fund?
So they're all general funds. Some are tracked with a specific code. That is true. And so it's not that it's impossible, but it's just what, because it's unrestricted and can be spent on anything, it's not, one year, I, I don't want to.
But, but you know what? I don't know that it has to be itemized as much as it just needs to be out there what we're spending it on. If it's material, classroom materials and supplies, I mean, you say that, of course, part of it goes to that, especially if it's going into the zero resource. So we just need to be clear that there's some accountability to the public as to where those funds are being allocated. That's all.
Can we just think about this and move on from this? Because I, I think there's some good ideas here. Yes, but we also have something from Dr. Velazquez here.
Motion to extend the meeting till midnight.
Second. All in favor?
Right on time. I guess we're too late.
Then we got to go, I guess.
I don't want to go into my, I have a comment on this item that had nothing to do with it.
Oh my gosh. Okay, now, we've got this action item here, this LCAP. Oh, yes.
I had a, a comment about this that didn't have to do with that discussion. It, and it is a petty comment, but it is not. It is important. One of the items of evaluation is making materials available for all students. I have a pile of brand-new, unused books that came back to me in May. If I, my kids were in private school and I was paying for those books, I would be very upset. And year and year and year after year after year after year, I have a pile of unused, untouched books, cuadernos, workbooks, textbooks that have never been opened. So maybe we can move to making available and using materials.
I, I think a lot of our materials are online for students, and because of Williams, we have to provide them physical, physical copies. I could be wrong, but I believe that's why we, I too, have piles and piles of unused books at home.
Okay, so we're going to wrap up this discussion. Do we have? Yeah, we need a motion. Anyone going once?
I move approval. What? Yeah.
Second. All in favor? Oh, student. Ms. Chi.
Yes.
All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Approval, Ms. Iverson. That's going to be, yes?
I'll move approval of M2, the Selpa Plan, Budget Plan, Service Plan, all the plans. So that was a motion.
Second.
I was going to raise a statement on Director Iverson's behalf, if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So for local plan components submitted for board approval, Section D, Annual Budget Plan, Section E, Annual Service Plan. These plans outline the allocation of special education funding and the continuum, continuum of services provided to students with disabilities across the Selpa. These documents were developed in compliance with the state and federal requirements and reflect input from multiple stakeholders, including parents, administrators, and staff. In accordance with the state guidance, the Community Advisory Committee, CAC, reviewed and approved the plans. Public notice of the plan's availability and CAC reviewed was made accessible as required. Approval of these sections supports the Selpa's ongoing commitment to equitable access to services, fiscal accountability, compliance with special education mandates, improved outcomes for students with disabilities. Upon board approval, the plans will be formally submitted to the California Department of Education. Respectfully, Sally Iverson, Director of Pasadena Unified Selpa.
So is that what Sally would have said had she been in this room? Okay, so that's why I said approval of the 2025, Ms. Iverson, then you were going to read that, and then we were going to discuss, or somebody was going to do a motion, but that just went all crazy, right? All right, so let's, all right, so we got a motion in it? Excuse me. We have a motion in a second. Yes.
I just want to acknowledge that this budget was built on our second interim projections at that time for special education, and that in our current budget, it, instead of 90 million, it's now 91 million. But that's just due to timing.
A motion in a second. Student board member.
Yes.
All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, does somebody want to make a motion before I announce this? Or do we just want to, y'all just want to take it over because you can? Or maybe we should just go with the flow, the way it's supposed to go. Number three, approval of the fiscal stabilization plan. Mr. Bravo Karimi. You have anything to say about this?
Presented on it two weeks ago. There's a slide on it in the presentation I'm, I'm doing later, but it hasn't changed from, from what was presented on the 12th of June.
All right, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second. Question, was there a second? I did not hear a second. Okay, everybody's just, is there a railroad train going through here?
I thought it was a second.
No, there's no second. So you have a question. What is your question?
The revenue that was listed in the fiscal stabilization plan, is that all, did that all come through, Mr. Bravo Karimi, in the state budget agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there more TK than what you put there, or no?
We're getting clarification on that. It, it, yes, because we had assumed it was for a one-year only, and it's possible that it's ongoing.
It's ongoing, all right.
We're getting clarification.
And then the learning recovery money, I saw that it was in '26, '27, but we are getting some in '25, '26?
Correct. Here is just the assumption that it's offsetting expenditures in '26, '27, but you're correct on when the revenues were sued.
All right. So that was, the budget was good news, because the legislator had, legislature had made it a little goofy. And then I was trying to understand, on the grant maximization, it says that we might have fewer supplies. And so I was trying to, so it says we're going to use grants to off, where we can for other expenditures, and that the resulting impact, am I misquoting it?
No, you, it, that is meant to be on the cell above.
Oh.
That second sentence, my apologies.
Okay.
It's just a use of restricted grants and balances on eligible expenditures is all that it should read for that item.
Okay, and the impact would be that potentially some of the things those grants would have been spent on won't happen?
To the extent it's being used on something already, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Fredericks?
Did you?
No. Yes? Okay. That's a half a raise.
Is there any way you can put the, the fiscal stabilization plans spreadsheet up? I think it's just two, two pages. Anyway, I can also verbally say it. There are two specific line items that have potential revenue, which is item six, asset management, and then energy efficiency savings, which we covered earlier. I believe the asset management was like a million? I have to look at the spreadsheet, but it was not very much. Or maybe energy efficiency was a million. But could there be potential for higher revenue generation from those two categories? I feel like the asset management portion has not either, it hasn't been publicly, it might be, you know, privately discussed, but we haven't seen.
It's possible. Yes, it's possible for it to be more than that. It's, unfortunately, it's possible for it to be less than that. This is all meant to be above and beyond what's already assumed in our multi-year projection. And so there's already a baseline of a certain amount of revenues that we receive from leases. And on the energy savings, there's a certain baseline on what we're already spending for utilities. This would be an assumption of a reduction in that spending. And so they are estimates at this time, and as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the FSP, these are not final decisions. The, the board ultimately will decide what changes are made in the budget moving forward, and there's going to be a process that's going to play out over the next several months. These are just some early thinking, and because the Laco is requiring us to provide not a lot of detail, as you can see, some very high-level information. So these are not final decisions, and yes, all of these amounts could materially change.
And I know that certain union partners have complained about the contract services being too high, and then here we are with a massive reduction of totaling 20 million in contract services. I don't know who can speak to, is that even possible? I, I'm trying, I, it's hard to conceptualize because it's very, it's a bucket that.
It's going to be difficult, because as we discussed more than a couple of months ago, the vast majority of our contracted services are in general fund restricted and for special education. And those that are unrestricted are for utilities and insurance, and, and those are things that are important. So.
How do we cut that? Like, it's like, you know, waste services or something.
Right, exactly.
It's like, that's essential, we're cutting that? We're cutting that in half? Or what is?
No, we're, we're not cutting the essential services. It would need to be, nothing, you know, we don't spend money on things that aren't in service of our students. Everything has to be spent in service of our students. So there's nothing that we won't feel when we recut it, when we live without it. But given the size of the financial problems that we're facing, the challenge that we're facing, we're going to have to reduce a little bit of everything and a lot of somethings.
There's this idea that we are one of the largest landowners in Pasadena, and we are sitting on a gold mine. What do you say to that idea?
So the first part is true. We are a very substantial property owner, the biggest in the city, I, I believe. That doesn't mean, though, that there are unlimited opportunities to generate revenues. The facilities are generally used by us or by lessees. So while there is some opportunities, there's not, none of it, it's all going to be a very small fraction of, of resolving the problems that we're facing. fraction of resolving the problems that we're facing.
This is a very difficult situation, and we've been talking about it for the last two years, and we've been fully acknowledging it. And this is the third year that we're going to go into a very difficult situation, third year in a row. And part of me understands that this year we were put in a very difficult situation due to a situation that was not under our control, yet it's everybody's fault, let's talk about climate change, but let's not talk about climate change. Anyway, my point being that we can't make progress two percentage points, two percentage points at a time. And that's the game that we were playing with educational outcomes, and that's the game that we're playing with our pocketbook. And we're gonna, and I'm not being literal with the 2%, but you know what I mean. What I mean is that we are at the critical decision point. And this is not going to be enough. And if we want to talk about it in August, we can talk about it in August. But that's what happened last December. We decided, let's spend Christmas and then talk about it, and then. So I, we keep repeating history without the true acknowledgement to ourselves and to the community that so far the pain has been superficial, but the changes have to be radical.
Anybody else on this? Do I have a motion? We're moving on. One, motion in a second. Did we have one?
Privilege, can I have one more?
You know why? We're moving on, because we have to get done.
Okay.
And everybody has their time to talk. Motion? We have a motion in a second. Okay. Student Board Member.
I I'm a little bit confused right now as to why she can't ask her last question.
She can ask her last question.
It wasn't a question, actually. I have advocacy, which I believe there's a question period. Then when it's time to vote, I believe there's an advocacy period. So I was reminded by Dr. Velazquez's last comment of my advocacy, and that it's very similar in that we are repeating history. We are, we've been here before, and we can't be doing, continuing at this trajectory. And so there's, there needs to be some very fundamental change if we're going to turn this district around. And this is why I'm going to vote a certain way.
Now I have a question. What is the fundamental change we need to do here, and what are we turning around the budget? We're on a trajectory for the Fiscal Stabilization Plan, but what is the fundamental change? I'd like to know. I'm confused. Because we have a plan, right? So I'm just, I'm really confused now.
Because every year we lay off people, and then we decline again, and we lay off more people, and eventually there won't be any people.
We can't, if we have declining enrollment.
So our goal is to be financially stable in the long term. That is our goal. Now, I'm a what, we're the what right now. We're the what to set a goal, which is financial stability. But how we get there is for the experts.
So if I could add, thank you, first of all, for allowing us to talk this through, because sometimes that's what we need to do. If we're trusting our staff to be the experts, we're trusting our staff to be the experts. If we don't like something that's presented to us, we then need to direct staff. And through that direction, we need to explain to them what it is we want to see, and we need to be clear about that. To me, for us to just turn something down because the numbers don't look like what we want them to look like, doesn't help staff, who are the experts, who have brought us what they believe to be their best numbers. And so this is our Fiscal Stabilization Plan, and it's very important. If we're not going to pass this plan, we need to have something else in its place, or else we could actually be not passing this plan to the detriment of the entire district, because everything has a deadline.
There's different ways to balance a budget. So if we're going to keep doing this cutting, if, you know, I can, I can cut, you know, I could figure out 80%, 70%. I can balance a budget, but how do you do that? Like, where do you cut? Where do you invest? That's the difference. That's the difference. So I mean, hire me.
What do you want to, what do you want to do with this?
Hire me, and I'll just say, cut 80, you know, 20% across the board.
Tina, for right now.
Next year, are we going to do 20% again? Let's just keep cutting, 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 cutting.
For right now, tonight, we're talking about this plan that is before us.
I get it. And then next year, it'll be the same.
It's been.
The methodology is the same.
It is going to be like that as long as we are a declining enrollment district. That is going to be, that's why we're supposed to be our best cheerleaders.
I am a board member, and I, it's not my job to just enable the thing that keeps putting us down a certain path. I'm sorry if you don't like what I'm saying.
Well, then come up with a recommendation.
It's not my job to tell you how to get there. I am telling you, we need financial stability in the long term. How you do that is up to our experts.
I think the, the one reality is that in a people business, which school districts are, between 80 and 90% of our expenditures are on people, it's very, very difficult to cut the amount we have to cut without having fewer people. And it'll be up to us to figure out which is the least impactful way to make those cuts to the students. It's not, I'm not saying it's going to be fun.
Mr. Harden.
Yeah, I, I think in the short term, we have to respond to the recommendations that are being given to us, because that's in front of us today. Again, I think you made the point, Trustee Bailey, that this is, this is something, a short-term answer to a longer-term question, and then when we think about the long term, we have to think about, we as a board deliver intention to, to our staff. So I think that's where, you know, some of us have been making the point about engaging stakeholders in what kind of district we want to be for not just, you know, the next five years, but 10, 20, 30 years, and then using that, that sort of scope, that vision, to help us make tough choices about, you know, our, our properties, our sites. Are we, are we driving towards, again, you know, we have, we're in incredible crisis, but we also have an incredible opportunity, given that a significant amount of our properties are damaged. And so what do we, what do we want to be educationally for Altadena? And so I think, you know, today, we have to make cuts that the public will look at and say, that doesn't look pleasant to me. But we can change our trajectory, but we have to know what we're changing it in service of. And so that's why I think, you know, I'm advocating for, for the kind of, you know, visioning process that we're talking about, a longer-range design, so that when, beyond this year, when we look at next year, and we look at the following year, maybe we can course correct. Maybe some of the, we make cuts in different areas, because we know where we're headed.
Superintendent, then. Okay, Velazquez first. Okay, then Ms. Chi.
So here is, here is the conflict that I was trying to point out. I feel like when it comes to these decisions, we often function within an argumentative fallacy that presents a false dilemma or dichotomy, which is, we need to do this because this is an emergency, because this is the last day, because if we don't do it, there is this, da, 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 da. And so over and over and over again, year after year, we're put in that same position, where we're like, we have to make this decision, and this is the last time, and we have to pass it, and da, 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 right? And so we make the decision and approve it, and we're like, well, but really, I don't really love this idea, but I guess we have to do it, because, and that situation keeps happening over and over and over and over and over again, right? Year after year. The conflict with that is that there is a point where small percentage changes are not going to be enough to really make up for the structural problems that we have. In my opinion, that time is here. We, we're there. That's it. We're here, right? And so this decision that we're going to make today may seem inconsequential, because we have to go back and, you know, have a group, and have a consultation, and have a discussion, and da, 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 da. What I fear is that the next time we're going to have a vote, and we're going to make this decision, we're going to be, again, in the same false dichotomy of like, we have to make the forest, the ceiling is burning, the ceiling is burning. Okay, I understand. What I'm saying is that it's not enough, and the critical point of decision-making has arrived. And I can humor today's item. And honestly, I am humoring it, because the stark reality of what's coming, this is just like an exercise. I get it. I get it. But it is difficult to, again, and, and, and our situation got complicated in January, and that was an exceptional, and, and in my mind, I had to make a calculation of, okay, I know that this, we're reaching a critical point, but given the circumstances, I need to weigh it. I did not say it, but that was my calculation in approving it, because what can we do, right? That's a calculation made by my own individual person. I don't, my intention here is not to convince any of you. You do what you, you do you. What I'm saying is that I am at a point of critical decision-making, and I believe that a tweak here, and a tweak here, and a tweak here is not going to be sufficient, that a big structural change needs to be proposed.
I think this board needs to be the change that it wants to.
Well, in the last meeting we had, I asked Mr. Simon Bravo Karimi that if we were fully funded for sped, what would this budget look like? And he said it would be radically different, radically different. So if we're not, if we're going to pass this, we're passing this under great duress, something that we're not in control of. But if we're not going to pass it based on something, I'm not sure where that leaves this board. I mean, what if we didn't pass this tonight? What would happen?
So voting in favor of this does not mean these things will happen. As I mentioned before, LACO required us a second interim in their approval, top of FSP. They fully know that we're not making final decisions for the '26, '27 budget tonight, because tonight we're approving the '25, '26 budget. Voting against it will also not prevent the cuts from happening in the future. That's going to happen at a later date. So it is a requirement that we have an FSP. LACO's required it as part of our June budget. And so I'm not sure what LACO will say or do if it fails, but just to be clear, you're not voting for these to actually be implemented. And, and just for what it's worth, I mean, these, in terms of, is it enough, just from a financial standpoint, the total solutions total 83, 83.1 million dollars over three years. That would be more than enough to bring us into the positive ending balance, fully fund our reserves. And so in terms of, I know that they're very difficult things to consider, the positions that are included here is one of many difficult cuts. But just from an, in terms of the math, they would be sufficient to bring us well into balance during the three-year forecast period.
Superintendent? Student first.
Thank you. Speaking for myself, I understand Ms. Frederick's point. As students, we are fatigued. I think we're all feeling very fatigued by seeing these numbers, by seeing these negative words just constantly pop up. And this is a very important discussion for us to have. And as the student assembly, we also understand, to Ms. Bailey's point, if enrollment is going to drop, these are the conditions we're going to have. And to my point, I'm, I'm just trying to, which is also why the student assembly, our student think tank, we're, we are working on this, which is why we created our new committee, the marketing outreach. The heart of why enrollment dropping is because we have a certain image that other students, other districts, think that we're ghetto, and that's it. Because, because they, they see these schools, and they see our schools, and they see, they don't see people, they don't see smart, accomplished, they don't see our schools filled with opportunities, when we know we are, because the student assembly and student think tank are the smartest, most thoughtful, caring, empathetic people I have ever met. And which is why we are working so hard to showcase this true side of PUSD. And I'm very grateful for this discussion that we're having, because we're thinking of ways, why is this like this? How can we change this, instead of just approving the same thing over and over again, even though I know our wonderful team is doing exactly what is best for us? My point is, as students, we see this issue, and we hear this issue, and please work with us, and you guys have been so amazing at it. Please continue.
Superintendent.
Well, as mentioned, we're going to have the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, and we are going to get input from our community on what's important. And we did include a student last time, may, maybe we'll include more students this time. But the reality is that the whole entire San Gabriel Valley is declining, right? It's not just Pasadena. There are lower birth rates, and it's very expensive to live in California. Many people are leaving the state. Our dilemma before used to be private versus public. I think our private schools are suffering as well. Our charter schools are suffering as well in terms of enrollment, because there just aren't as many children, right? So I do support Mr. Harden's idea, envisioning for the future, and I think we should talk about that as a governance team, and who would be the best group to help us do that. I feel that that could happen simultaneously with the budget. But it's always hard to lose people, right? We started with the central office, and I want to reiterate that, both times that we did severe budget cuts, we started with the central office. One time, it was too late to even go into the schools, and the second time, we wanted to put out everything we had first. So there, there is staffing ratios that are approved by the board that we never truly implemented until this last year. And we have to continue to implement them unless the board changes the staffing ratios, or gives us direction, that they don't want to do that. You know, looking at Mrs. Frederick's idea, and I think Dr. Velazquez has mentioned this before, maybe there's some schools that need different staffing, right? Those are things that we need to negotiate. Maybe there's places where children have greater needs, and we need to look at what it takes for, you know, the ratios there. But in terms of what we have today, we, we're going to continue to have to reduce staff until we get more children, right? So that's something that's a given in our current policy, and that's hard. And I know it's hard for all of us when, you know, people are losing jobs. So we, you know, that's, that's, we can't say we can't have no layoffs, because if there's less children, there's going to be less staff. And that's in every area of the organization, not just the classroom or the central office. or the central office. But we definitely want to work together and minimize these impacts. We're fortunate that we have Measure J, and the community supported a parcel tax, because our impacts are less than they would be without this kind of support from our community. So I think they do value POSD. Um, they've shown us that. Um, and I think that's why all of you feel like you have such a responsibility to taxpayers, because they've given us such great support. And we will make sure that, um, we do include them and inform them of everything that's gonna have to happen in the future.
Ms. Frederick?
So, I'm actually encouraged by what Trustee Harden and Superintendent Blanco, Trustee Chi is saying, um, the visioning process. And I'm more encouraged in, on that idea. And I would like more assurance that we are gonna have this visioning that we keep talking about, we're gonna have. Um, the S-BAC, I would like it to be, um, more invol- I, like, I've seen... Anyway, uh, I- I'm encouraged to support the fiscal stabilization plan, knowing that there's a date for this visioning, and that the S-BAC will be more inclusive, more transparent. You know, people know about it, they can participate.
Okay, so, the visioning plan is something that we've been talking about in... We've been talking about long-term visioning. The decision to do a long-term vision, which extends into twenty years from now, which is a very good time for us to do this. We talked about it, this in the last retreat, and the reason... All right, just, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm not gonna beat this dead horse, but budgets have two primary sections, that's revenue and expenses. In order to, us to have to cut less, we need to bring in more revenue. We have made that effort with Measure EE, and thank you to the voters who invested in us and who believe in us. We, at some point, are continuing our federal advocacy around trying to bring in additional dollars around IDEA for special ed funding, but at some point, we have limitations on where our dollars come from. And because we have those limitations, we're gonna have to make some cuts on our expenditures. Again, nobody has expressed any joy in wanting to go through this process. But we are being the mature, responsible adults that you elected us to be, members of the public, and taking the necessary actions that are faced before us right now. Um, school districts are unique in that we're required to pass three-year budgets based on one year of revenue from the state. So, we know somewhat definitively what twenty-five, twenty-six dollars look like, but we are projecting at best, based on that number, what twenty-seven and twenty-eight will follow. So, every one of the thousand or so districts across the state is going through the same process, trying to make their best extrapolation with a limited amount of information. So, we are doing the best that we can to be good stewards of the public dollars, um, trying to uphold our core mission, which is to serve our students, but also trying to make sure that we are spending money that we actually have, and not putting ourselves in a position to spend money that we do not have. So, my colleagues have been very clear about their, um, displeasure in adopting the FSP. I don't take any joy in this either. I'm happy to have conversations about, um, longer-term visioning and planning, but today is not that day. Please vote for this, and let's move on, so we can get through the rest of our business.
What do we have on the floor? We have a motion and a second. And we're done with the conversation? Let me know. Ms. Chi?
Yes?
All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, you have that? Let's go on to the next one. Approval of adoption of twenty-five, twenty-six budget, approval of resolution, two-eight, two-seven resolution. Motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Conversation. Any comments? Ms. Chi?
Yes?
Ms. Kenny?
I want to say thank you for including the staffing ratios and the changes in positions. On the staffing ratios, I wondered if anyone could speak to the change to add more assistant principals at the high schools?
So, the ratios were adjusted to reflect what was already allocated at PHS, I believe. Uh, so that was already the status quo, it just wasn't, those ratios that were published previously did not match it, and so that's the adjustment that was made. And now, now any high school, uh, which there's only in one other Mure that has a similar enrollment, uh, will now have the same number of assistant principals as PHS.
Okay, so as PHS grew smaller, we didn't reduce them to match our old ratios, so we changed it, because we left the person there. Is another way of phrasing it?
I mean, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Okay. And then, I didn't see any special ed staffing ratios. Is that something we can add in the future? I mean, I'm hoping that staffing ratios is kind of a, a conversation we have somewhere before we finalize, you know, our budget. I, I think it will happen this year, if we're gonna be making any changes, but, um, I would encourage us to add those, so that people kind of know what those are. And on the position changes, I tried to compare that to the layoffs we did, and I unfortunately didn't get to that until late today, because, um, that wasn't posted earlier. But I will, um, reach out to you, because I just, I want to make sure that if we did cut something in March fifteenth, that we see it here in the positions as actually being cut, is, that will actually help us achieve those, um, amounts that we hoped to reduce. And then I just want to say that, you know, even with the significant cuts we made, the year-over-year expenditures from this year to twenty-five, twenty-six are still three million more. And that's just because everything is costing more. So it's gonna be challenging to, to cut the thirty million, and the sooner we start the planning, the better. Um, and, and I'll reiterate, you know, and this is perhaps Ms. Bailey's point earlier, of our base funding, forty percent of it is going to special education. Um, and that is a tough situation, so hopefully, that's something we can work on.
Any other conversation? Mr. Harden?
Yeah, I just wanted to call attention. I think, uh, you know, there's been a lot of, of stated concern about the classroom, um, how much we're spending in the classroom. And I, I think you've noted, uh, on page five of the assumptions, that, um, there will be sort of a final calculation forthcoming. So, that, that assumed a number of forty percent, which includes, you know, the FIRE revenues and expenses, will be, um, re-audited and, and adjusted.
That's right.
So that number, hopefully, will improve.
Any other comments? Student board member?
Yes?
All in favor? All opposed? No, seven-zero. Okay, approval of resolution, uh, I just lost where we were.
Would the chair entertain a sweep for item five and six?
Yes.
I move approval of M-five and M-six?
Second.
Ms. Chi?
Yes?
All in favor? All opposed? Seven-zero. Okay, uh, now, are we going to table item N, board discussion? Or postpone it?
I move to table.
Postpone or table? Is she saying postpone?
If you table it, it dies. You wanna postpone it, so they can come back another time.
I'll, I'll restate my motion to postpone.
Second.
Ms. Chi?
Yes?
All in favor? All opposed? Abstained? Did you raise your hand? Oh, I didn't see it. I didn't see it. Seven-zero. Okay, um, we're at board committee reports. Who wants to start this? I can start it, or governance handbook? We sent out a draft to everyone. We got one trustee's feedback. We will be incorporating those suggestions, which were very good, in our August meeting. So, if you have any comments, I suggest getting them to us, so we can discuss them in August, and then the final draft will be given to everybody at the regular August meeting. That's all I have. Anybody else? Michelle Bailey?
Okay, so, the seat, you don't want me to report? CLC met last night, um, and we, uh, had three new members, so yay. I think the committee is full now, right? We're full, seven. And so, um, thank you to everyone who attended that meeting. I think it was a very good meeting. Um, we had the, um, presentation or discussion from, let me look at the agenda, hold on. The, um, Measure TT and Measure O, financial performance audits. Uh, we had these bylaws and overview, and legal role of responsib- and responsibilities. Um, we were informed that all Measure TT funds have been spent now. Is that what you said? So yay. Um, also, let's see, we had the bond program and construction management plan update. Um, they reviewed the monthly facilities report, the five-year bond program. We had the construction progress status report, and, um, we reviewed Measure O board reports as well. And then I do have to ask, because I didn't get a chance to look, did we get the revised board report eighteen forty-two today, in the, okay, so, we got all that.
Anybody else?
I would like to remove the Latino Student and Family Task Force from the board liaisons list, as it is a pipe dream, but has not been, eh, formed.
She's asking to remove a committee that was... It doesn't exist. It was talked about, so I'm looking here. Uh, I'm just trying to find it. I just need a second. Where is this? I have board committees, board policy, facilities, I'm...
Page eleven of the agenda.
Thank you.
The list of board-
Page eleven. Oh, here it is. Here it is. Got it, got it, got it. Yes.
Yes, some of the superintendent committees did, um, not get to meet as often as we wanted to. My understanding on that one was that you were working with, um, Dr. Velazquez, the curriculum and instruction department, and wanted, um, on a family literacy project, instead of going the, um, the design that we had gone with, with the, um, African-American Family Task Force. Um, so I don't want to remove it, because I would like us still to move forward with it.
I think that if, if it's created, and if it actually exists, then we can incorporate it, but to have it here in the agenda gives the impression that we're doing something that we're not.
So we're not moving forward with the family literacy project?
You are with a different, you are, you're actually implementing one with a different focus, not the one that we had originally envisioned. Yes, but no.
Okay, well, we can talk more about it offline, um, but if, if we're gonna go in a different direction, I can, I can put the committee on next year as well. Um, but I don't want the focus to be removed from, uh, the work that we're doing.
All right, so, um, we're just gonna leave that as, leave that there. Anybody else? I don't know what to do with that, but let's just move on, unless somebody-
I mean, you can put a clar- a clarification that is pending, but it doesn't exist, so...
Well, who's in charge of the committee? Who's in charge? The superintendent committee?
Superintendent Committee, and Dr. Velazquez is the liaison, and my understanding is that she was working with Dr. Chan Hill in the curriculum department. I will follow up and see why we don't have the same understanding.
Let's do that.
Do you just want to change and not be the liaison?
If somebody invites me to a meeting, I'll go.
Maybe put pending on it, until we problem solve it, yeah.
So do we need to assign another liaison, Dr. Velazquez?
Getting invited to-
We're moving on.
Getting invited to a meeting doesn't mean that-
Okay.
You're the liaison.
We're talking about board committee reports, so let's just move on. Is there any other board committee report right now? Does anybody have one? No, nobody has one. So we're done with that. Now we're gonna go to the consent agenda. Motion in a second?
I have some polls.
Okay, let's do the polls.
Four H, four J, five D-
All right, back it up, back it up. Say it again.
Four H, four J-
Yes.
Five D, five E, five G, five M, five O.
Anybody else have polls? I'm sure some people do. Kim has comments.
One C.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain, because I was not present at said meeting.
Okay.
Um, poll, um, three A.
That's it? Okay, so, just bear with me for a second. If she pulls, she didn't, did she pull it to abstain? Because she could always abstain. Okay. Okay, so, I just, thank you. Okay, so now, are we doing a sweep for the rest of this, and then we'll go through these?
I'll move approval for the sweep.
Second?
So I can make comments?
Oh, yes, you can make-
Lovely. Three C was not pulled. This was the continuity plan that's now required by law, and I, hopefully the superintendent can relay these, um, comments to, I'm not sure which department put it together, but, um, it did have a section where it said, how is there gonna be two-way communication between parents? Um, and it seemed very unidirectional out. And then also, I asked how was student and parent input into this plan received, and it said, well, we didn't actually, for this iteration, that wasn't really done, but we'll do it in the future. But this is the, if a disaster happens, our continuity, and what our plan is to continue. This is, um, three C. So, um, I just wanted to comment that I hope we'll get input next time. And on the school plans, um, I know that, I don't see Dr. Turley here anymore, but I would say, it would be really great if we could include the current year enrollment and demographics in the school plan. I, when I was reading them, I was like, oh, I'm looking at the multi-year change in, in enrollment and the demographics. I'm like, but wait a minute, this is twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm reading a plan for twenty-five, twenty-six. What happened to twenty-four, twenty-five? So I know that they're reporting on all of the outcome data from twenty-three, twenty-four, but it'd be really nice if more current enrollment and demographics could be included. Um, and I'm gonna ask again that we develop some kind of expenditure table, similar to the one that we have in the LCAP, where for each thing, you can see the goal, the action that's being done, and what, what the funding is. It's really hard, looking at these plans, to figure out in the budget summary, where the money's going. And it's even hard, it's hard when you're looking at the individual actions, to tell which money and what it's actually being paid for. So, two requests. And then, I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to this. I was seeing quite a few project aids, this is all school plans, project aid, I could have pulled it, but I didn't need to vote on it separately. Quite a few project aids that are being funded, but being used for classroom support, instructional support. And I was wondering, I'm not as familiar with the job qualifications for a- And I was wondering, I'm not as familiar with the job qualifications for a project aide versus an instructional aide. I think project aides are hourly. I don't know if they get benefits. But I'm kind of seeing this trend towards people hiring project aides, both for outside, S E L, but also for in the classroom. And I just wondered if there, maybe this is for the future, is this an effective strategy? Because I'm seeing schools do it more. So I don't see anyone here.
Oh, Dr. Kinnon would have to answer the differences in the job descriptions. But the way that project aides have been used in the past is to sometimes support students who are struggling with maybe some behavioral issues or challenges. They needed that extra adult to be with, you know, not as a one-to-one aide, but just be with them to support them. I don't think they're being used to replace instructional aides, but it's very difficult to get instructional aides. We are always in a shortage. And so I think project aides are sometimes people that the principals or teachers know in the community. And so they don't have the same qualifications as an instructional aide, but they might be easier to access.
I may do, there was a couple of plans that actually mentioned using them as classroom instructional literacy and math support. And one of the site council meetings I attended, they also, so something just to keep an eye on. All right, that was school plans.
I have a question. The first thing you asked, you had a request for something. What was it?
I said, it would be great if we could include current year enrollment and demographics rather than, so like in this year's plans, the most current enrollment was twenty-three, twenty-four rather than twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is it possible to get the current year? I'm asking staff. Or the superintendent? Is it possible to get that? So the board, does the board want to do this? This is a request. Okay, so we have a consensus on this, for the board is requesting this. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
All right, the emergency resolution for A, I was just wondering when staff was expecting that that would not be needed? What's our timeframe?
Don't know yet.
Still don't know.
Well, we're from, I mean, the soil testing that we just did is a good example of the value of having had it in place, even months later.
All right, and then I just wanted to remark on, nope, I have two more, sorry. On the purchase orders, the total amount of all our legal has gone over what the board authorized. I think we authorized just under three million. And now we've got contracts out there for three point three. And then I did just want to say, I noticed that our interns premiums grew quite a bit. I'm assuming that's fire-related, but it was a significant increase. So I did want to mention that. So even as we're moving forward and making cuts, we have expenditures that are going up.
I also have a P O list. Observation, no, no, P O Purchase Order List Observation. I noticed that the total was like five point nine this month. And the change orders were about the same. It was five point two. Is that at all like a red flag at all? Or is that just from the fire?
I'd have to research that. It's not a red flag, but I might have to research it.
It's just odd that they're about the same amount. Change orders, five million, and the expenses were five million. They're, they're equal. It's just odd. And then the the award for on-call move and surplus, there's three funding sources. One is the, from Measure O, there's five hundred thousand and then fifty thousand from general fund. Is there a reason we didn't just put it all in five fifty from Measure O?
I'd have to follow up with staff. I don't know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nobody. Okay. Student Board Member?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion on the floor, which is the sweep of everything but the polls? All right, so now we're going to go start with the polls. I'm going to start with Dr. Velazquez's four H.
I'm okay with doing four H and four J together. I've said repeatedly, I have a problem with continuing to approve contracts for consultants without a concrete plan. And so I'm going to continue to vote no in all of the consultants' contracts until we are presented with a plan.
I'll move approval for four H and four J. Student Board Member?
Second.
Oh, second. Student Board Member?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. And then five D?
That is the item of the seventeen million dollars for Franklin. I do not think that that is a wise decision, and I oppose the idea.
I have a question on that. Seventeen million for the swing space. Can you describe that? Because we have some trustees that think this is too much money.
So as folks are aware, Franklin was damaged in the fire. And to restore it, in order for it to be a swing space for the modernization projects, it requires this investment of insurance proceeds. One point of clarification, it's not quite the case that the insurance proceeds can be used for whatever we want. They are principally for the losses incurred and, and the expense of building them back. I'm oversimplifying a little bit, but, but that's conceptually the, the way that the policy works.
Kim.
So this item itself is, under fiscal, is listed as Measure O. But would we be using the insurance funding?
Ultimately, yes, once that claim is finalized.
Oh, so the insurance we've already received couldn't be used for it?
The insurance we've received is in advance on our future claim. Given the size of our losses, the insurance, knowing that we're spending money in rapid amounts, has given us installments of the, in advance, if you will, installments of cash, given that they're assured that our final claim will exceed what they've advanced us.
Well, this is a very detailed question, but given that we're approving this tonight, and if this is going to hit our books, given where we are, do we need to issue more Measure O?
I
That's just a aside, not to be answered necessarily tonight. But I mean, we're keeping an eye on that because
Of course.
This is one of the things that I was worried about. I was like, how are we going to build a whole building in time to actually move people into it? But it, this is the design build, I believe, where we can start some of the construction, even as we're finishing the design of the rest of it. So it's not one of those, got to do all the design first and then all the building second. So just wanted to keep that.
So to be clear, this is insurance money. We get, it comes, it comes to us. It's a, okay, I understand. Oh, yes, Ms. Fredericks.
Yeah, I also wanted to clarify that money, because in the Five-Year Bond Program Plan, it earmarks a million, like pre-fire, pre-bond money. We only allotted a million to fix up Franklin. But since the fire almost entirely or significantly destroyed Franklin, that entire seventeen million is insurance money.
I mean, it's, to be determined exactly what the capital split will be because we haven't filed our insurance claim yet. But the intention is to get as much of the cost, if not all of it, from insurance.
And we can't use that to change Franklin. It has to be the, as it was Franklin.
Generally speaking, it's to build back like and kind and with any necessary code upgrades, but
Okay.
There's There's only so much I want to say
Yeah.
in a public setting.
All right.
It can't be spent anywhere else. It has
Okay, so let's, can we go on to five E? Are we done here? Oh, yes, Superintendent. Oh, and then Dr. Velazquez?
I just want to remind you too, we also have a lawsuit that's been made public with Edison that we will try to recover any other money that wasn't covered by insurance.
So we have multiple properties that were impacted by the fire, correct? And you said that the intention is to file the claim? And what was the very carefully worded language that you used?
That we've, about the money we've already received?
No, about us submitting the claim for the coverage of the seventeen million dollars.
Yeah, that we haven't filed our claim yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And Franklin had been closed for many years before the fire. And we anticipate loss in enrollment. So we don't have an immediate use for this building, correct?
It was intended to be, it is the swing space, and so
Yes, the swing space, but not as a regular school after the swing space, given that we have declined in enrollment.
Yes.
Okay, and so we were not using it before. And after the after the use of its swing space, we've invested seventeen million dollars in a building that potentially could remain unused, potentially.
Yeah, so one, one, the, with, if we only had one swing space instead of two, obviously the impact would be modernization projects would happen one at a time instead of two at a time. Unless we found an alternative option for a swing space that would be likely substantially more expensive even, even than what we would have improved Franklin. And so it's not that there are superior alternatives that are better than this. I understand it is a lot of money. It is. But the alternatives would likely be more expensive because not all of Franklin was damaged.
Can I please set the record straight? So it wasn't that Franklin wasn't being used. It was being used. At first, it housed the Adult Education Program before they moved and relocated to Wilson. But that, the multi-purpose center where their cafeteria, if you will, where that existed, which was renovated with Measure Y or Measure T T funds, I think, that was used not only by the school district but also by the community consistently. And so it's not that the facility was sitting there not being used. And I just want to be clear on that because there's always uses for the facilities.
Thank you. I have one last question. Insurance money can be used to cover all expenses that we incur as a result of the fire.
As long as it's allowed in the policy itself. The devil's always in the details, unfortunately. There are some expenses that we will incur and have incurred that ultimately won't be covered by the insurance.
Thank you.
So that's five. Now I'm lost again. Five D? That's five D. So we're going to vote on five D. Is there a motion? Excuse me? Yeah, I'm asking for one.
I move approval on five D.
Second. Our student board member isn't here. Oh, okay. All in favor? All opposed? No abstentions. Okay, five E. We're on E.
Okay, so five E, five G, and five M can be taken as a group. So here's the thing, oh, we need to increase capacity because we need to increase volume of work. That means that we continue to hiring consultants and personnel to help us manage the facilities, which I understand, but at the same time, in a time of financial distress, we continue to invest in the growing needs of managing all of this crisis. I feel uncomfortable with the idea of the expansion of these. And I think that at all levels and all departments, we need to do less with less. And if that means scaling down some of the projects so that we can meet the capacity with the personnel, that with the existing personnel, that is a wise decision in my point of view. Additionally, I'm concerned about the in-house versus external consultant cost and return on investment. And finally, I would like to have some transparency about how we're moving forward issuing contracts within the context of our fiscal stabilization plan.
I'll move as a sweep, E, G, and M, five E, five G, and five M. And I do have a quick comment.
I'll second it.
I think the explanation that, and we kind of heard this again at the C O C last night, was wanting to move forward in an expeditious way to use the funds that the taxpayers have given us and not let inflation or other costs, inflation and other things drive up our costs so that spending the money sooner rather than later is, ends up being efficient. I do think it's important to understand, and we talked a little bit about this last night as well, understand the total administrative cost. And staff said that they would be coming back to us and helping us understand the total administrative costs, consultants and in-house as a percentage of our spending for construction to make sure that it's in line with industry standards. So that was something that I think the C O C has been interested in as well. And staff seems very amenable to helping us understand that better.
Anybody else on this item? It's a sweep for these three? Okay, so all in favor? All opposed? So five zero?
That includes the flooring for the building that I don't think that we should put seventeen million dollars plus whatever the flooring is. So it's even more money.
It's flooring upgrades at Allendale also, correct?
Yes, I ask us facilities to please separate them to increase the chances of getting my support. But even that they're together, I have to vote against both.
So Allendale and Franklin are both getting the flooring done on a piggyback contract. Okay, so what if we don't do the flooring at Allendale? What happens? What's the flooring?
Yeah, I mean, it's the other swing space currently occupied by Altona, so it would just, those flooring would not be improved.
Okay.
Move approval on P five O.
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, now I've got one C.
I was absent from that meeting, so I'm going to abstain on voting to approve minutes for a meeting I wasn't present at.
All right, so do we have a motion second on this?
Move approval on one C.
Second. All in
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? All abstained? And then three A?
Madam Superintendent, can you just give some greater scope about what we intend to utilize these grant funds for? And if there's any plan to align the goals and objectives that hopefully do not include spending dollars on law enforcement specifically as one of the uses of this grant specifies to the restorative practices, goals and objectives that are in three D. I'm hopeful that there could be some alignment between.
Sure, I can have Dr. Renoso write a more clear communique on the grant. But when we have had officers in the grant before, so we could train them in practices, if in event they had to come on the campuses, that they would use more restorative practices because their training is usually a little bit different than that. And they've always appreciated that additional training that we've been able to provide through the grant.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So I think in the past, we had started to work on a short grant form so that there'd be kind of, even when the so that there'd be kind of, even when the grant application is due in the future and so it isn't complete, we could at least kind of get that overview of what's this going to be used for, is it coordinate with other things? What's the budget being spent on that kind of thing? And we might have to go back and revisit implementing that and putting it in our policy. Just for this, I mean, I was asking where we're getting the money to match for this, which does have to be in cash, and I don't think that had been fully fleshed out yet.
That's a good suggestion. I just was concerned about what the scopes were that you can use the dollars for. And I was like, eh!
Mr. Bravo-Curriemi, did you have the answer on the matching funds?
Move approval, P three A.
All in favor?
I'll second with the
I'll second, with what?
Superintendent's explanation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Now I've got this four H and a four J. Did we already do that? We did that one. I just, oh, right, I did them separate. Okay, great. Then we're done there. No, there's no more. And we did the sweep, so we're done there. And now we go to no public comment? Board requests, questions? Ms. Kenny?
A question that I had posed had to do with the developer fees that we charge people when they do construction. And I don't know if we are sure 100% whether we would be collecting that for people rebuilding from the Eaton fire. I don't know if that's the kind of thing that triggers that. And then I don't know if we wanted to have a discussion about potentially waiving that or reducing it. I know a lot of other entities have been doing that. So, but I don't know what the potential revenue is. And I don't know if that's even a conversation, but I wanted to throw it out there to see if that is a conversation we want to have. And then I think there is a board resolution we need to do to raise the fees.
Is that, is that a conversation we can have in facilities?
Sure, I mean.
We're going to have the conversation, but I just want to caution you that there are some laws around what we can and can't do. So I'm not sure how those other entities are waiving fees. But we have been looking into it, right, Mr. Bravo-Curriemi?
All right, anybody else? Tina?
You know, I'm going to ask the visioning that we're going to have in the future, that we're not going to forget to have next year, we won't be repeating ourselves.
Retreat, Adam.
We, we discussed having a retreat around it. So this is something that we've been discussing. And the board has to get together and make a decision that a long-term vision is something they want. That's where we're at right now. We haven't made that decision as a board. Board decision.
Do we want to say we want to have it, or?
Well, I think some people probably have a lot of questions about what it's about and what it entails. And we have to decide how long it is. And we also have to have a decision about who's going to do the work and how it's done. This is going to take some time. But I think the first step is making the decision that this is something we want to do.
If this is something we want to do, it'd be nice if it was facilitated.
Yeah, I think we have to design the project. You know, it's a project, the visioning is a project. And I think we all have to, we can say we want to do it, but then we often be comfortable with what the scope of that is.
All right.
Would the starting point for that be at our scheduled retreat that's in August?
That's a good starting point place, yes.
And we can work out sort of the frame of kind of what we think is going to be scope and then kind of put some parameters together to identify facilitation and some other needs.
I think it's a great idea because when we mentioned it last time, Chris Steinhauser was way into it.
Yeah, and I would just caution, we don't want to lose sight of our board goals too as well, so.
Board goals is first, but then we can touch on the visioning. And Long Beach, they already did one. I mean, I think they're in one now that goes to 2030.
I think the board goal is probably going to dominate them.
Probably. We'll get there, we will touch on it.
I mean, we need to have a quality discussion, not a rush discussion.
Yes, yes.
I would like to request a special meeting to deal with the safety issues impacting our immigrant communities and all of our families of mixed status.
Dr. V, in order to facilitate having this special meeting sooner than later, are you, other members of the board, open to having it on a day that's naughty Thursday? So we can kind of accelerate that.
I don't know, I would have to look at my schedule because I'm busy every night.
Does it need to be like a quorum? It would need quorum basically, right?
Yeah.
And then we can make it, could we?
Is this discussion going to be above what the district is already doing to keep our campuses safe?
Well, yeah, because we had a discussion, we've had some discussions about that and.
We have not have an open forum discussion with, that the public has access to.
Do you want it to be just the staff doing presentation and then answering questions? Or do you, what other sort of experts do you want in the room?
I mean, it can always be a community meeting where you can host it at one of your school sites and invite the community to come in and.
I, I have a continuous exchange with community members. I think that this community deserves to hear from their board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Their entire board. Trustee Bailey, I think she wants a district-wide thing, not just a school site.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, the only thing that we can say as the board is support the superintendent and her efforts for keeping the students and staff safe while they're in school. Is that, is that what you're, you're talking about? Because above and beyond that, I don't understand what you're asking for.
I don't think that we have to have an agreement about what the scope of that meeting is.
Well, if you want to hear from me.
Or, or that is a very limited understanding of what we can and what our responsibility is to the community. We can have a meeting where we devise, number one, whether or not we are going to allocate budget to address some of the real and emergency needs that are coming up as a result of this situation. We can talk about safety concerns with our community partners that we're engaging with to give comfort and safety to parents that may not be comfortable either coming or reaching out to us. We can make available information to all of the families that are feel intimidated or afraid of even emailing the school district. There are multiple things that we can do at such meeting that do not need to, and.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused about what I even hear you saying right now.
That's okay.
Okay, if you want us to have the meeting, are you saying you want the meeting, the community members or the family members, to come and observe or be participants in said meeting?
Please understand that under the current conditions, that is not possible.
That's what I'm saying. So you're saying you just want the, I mean, come on.
Okay, what I, what I heard Dr. Velazquez say.
I'm trying to get clarity from you, Dr. Velazquez. So please bear with me. I just need clarity. So you're saying that you want this board to show up to have a special session where we discuss this as a board, not going to the community, which is what I thought I heard you say initially.
So, Dr. Velazquez, we've done quite a lot of work in the school district to do what you're saying. And we have a website with all of the resources and information and people that are, that we've talked to in the community that are equipped to support families in ways that we're not. Do you want us to discuss that website publicly and the resources on it? Like, I just want to understand what would be on the agenda? Presentations about that? Or do you feel there's something more that we can do?
As a policy, as, as a board, in, in regards to our policy and our values, we can use the opportunity to take an official position. I am grateful for your explanation of your current measures, but I think it would be an opportunity to hear from public comment and from our, our own input in, from the community, what things are needed to improve on that plan. It would also be useful, as I said before, to hear from community partners in terms of how they can support and will continue to support our efforts to keep our children safe. Our children right now, right now. Even the children that needs interventions the most, children that are in programs that are important for them to improve their outcomes and to be successful in August, are having to make decisions on whether or not to go to school. Fantastic, you have a plan. Great. There are elements of those plans that may be confidential and may be specific to the parents and the particular relationships of those parents and the need of those families. However, it is important for us to consider what are some of the implications moving forward? If this situation continues, are we willing to invest in public, in some sort of public transportation for families? If not paid by the district, how are we going to partner, partner with the Department of Transportation of Pasadena in order to make sure that our kids are safe when they're coming and going from schools? These are decisions that we need to make. These are policy decisions, these are resource decisions that we need to have in addition to an official, in addition to an official stand from this body. And I think that it is very difficult and somewhat frustrating to have to justify the need of this item in this way, almost like explaining racism to a person that is implying it. I mean, it is very difficult to have to be put in a position to explain the value important of this type of measure, right? It is very difficult.
You can't try to lead a group into doing something and you don't want to take the time to make sure they're clear on what you're asking them to do. Okay? So if you want us to participate as part of something that you want us to do, you need to be more patient and make sure that when you are asked clarifying questions, you take the time to answer it. You're not the only one being impacted by what's happening right now. I get it. I feel the same way you feel. Okay? But we got to be patient with each other.
I'm going to come back to my question. In order to accelerate and respond to the urgency that you are expressing, Dr. Velazquez, does this meeting have to be on Thursday? Or are we open to other days of the week? So we can try to agendize this sooner than later.
So are we talking about on Monday? Because I think people are leaving after that.
That's what I'm trying to gain.
Monday works.
I'm fine with Monday.
I'll make any day work.
You just need a form.
And, and what I might offer is, what I'm hearing from Dr. Velazquez is there's some problem solving happening in this meeting. It's a, it's a discussion, it's a, it's almost town forum, town hall, whatever words you want to use to describe it. But it's more than just, it's not us sitting here just listening to experts and then thanking them for their time and moving on. There's some, I think, desired action that comes out of. What are the things, what are the change, what change do we need to enable based on what we're hearing?
But to be compliant though, to be compliant though with Brown Act, we do, if we're going to approve money, we need to agendize that. So that, we can't just have discussion, we can't just have an idea, let's spend money, but we didn't agendize it, that.
Well, and maybe the, maybe the action is to explore at, you know, a budget change or something. We're not taking action in the meeting, but we're identifying the actions that we need to do downstream from the session. So, you know, so that we can properly agendize the. Well, it might be in concert with our regular meeting schedule, you know, to take action in those, those agendas. But I think the outcome, the, the desired outcome of this session is to come to some consensus on things we might want to do or have to do to get ahead of this evolving challenge.
Are we asking for a special meeting on Monday? Is that what's happening?
Like, the answer is yes.
In this room? What time?
Probably not before six, right?
Correct. Not before six?
Good.
Okay.
I'll make six work.
Yes.
So I want to be clear on what we're requesting on the agenda. And first of all, I want to restate that we have started working on the immigration situation since January, in the middle of the fire, we hired the best attorney in Southern California to train our staff. So I don't want it implied again that we're not doing anything. We have taken precautions. And we've also been very precautious about announcing what we're doing publicly for reasons of safety of the children and families. If that's what we want to make public, we will make that public. There is risks to making things public. And we do not have a list of undocumented families anywhere. We don't keep that kind of a database. So we can't reach out and say, do you need food? Or do you need transportation? We rely on people coming to our principals, coming to people that they trust in the community. And I have been in contact with Collaborate Pasadena and have asked them. I said, we're very interested in the same goals that you put in your newsletter. Let us know as a school district how we can support these efforts. Okay? I think our community partners are trying to figure it out. My understanding from people who have been in this situation as immigrants, including people in my family, is they do not want to come to people they don't know and trust. We are a government agency. So I have to be very clear on what we're putting on this agenda and how it's going to be presented.
And I, I would offer that, I think our target for this group is those community partners to, you know, because the folks that are victimized in this will not be coming to this event. It's the community partners stepping up and saying, oh, we have, here's a challenge we have with our district. We are limited by doing X, Y, Z. And so is there a community partner that can help us where we fall short? And, and because we, we can only do so, we can, we go up to a line because of, there's, we can't go beyond it because of whatever reason it is.
Have we been having those conversations with our community partners?
We've been having those conversations with our principals who are there. With, we've had meetings with our summer school staff, made sure that people, you know, know how to train. I think there is a question about transportation. I guess we could send buses to different places in the community because we wouldn't know exactly how to pick someone up at their home because we don't know exactly where they live and children could walk to certain bus stops. But beyond that, I think we have done everything that is legally possible for us to do.
So much as the chief did tonight in his public comment, he reiterated what can be done, what has been done, has been done, what cannot be done, which I think helps clarify for everyone where we are. And then if there is public comment from other community members or partners as, as, or if there's brainstorming that we come up with to say, well, here's some needs that we're hearing about, maybe we can connect that with other, I don't know. So I, I think there's a little bit more free form after we kind of cover of the, this is what we've done, this is what we can do, this is, you know. And I think it's a way of kind of saying, here's what, here's where we are. Here's, we're here, we're concerned about this issue and.
Can there be an anonymous form that people just say, I'm scared about this? And then ensure that we have accounted for those scenarios, basically?
That's the kind of, I mean, I'm saying, this is the kind of brainstorm I think we should do at that time and not now when it's not agenda.
I think, yeah, it's not, that's not the way it works. But we could definitely, you know, people are going to people they trust, right? We see kids couldn't come to school. Our principals know the families that can help them, right? And, and watch over them. And we have really strongly encouraged our families to make sure that they have updated their emergency cards since January. And in the summer programs, asked everybody to have emergency cards because maybe our PF partners don't have access to areas or somewhere where emergency contacts are. So.
Well, I think it's a, it's an opportunity to acknowledge what the district, without getting into detail, that the district is doing things. But there's only so far, there's only so much we can do. And so this is an opportunity for the community to say, we got you. There's things we can do that you can't do. There's things we can do that you can't do, and let's get those folks to step up.
Well, I hope you'll get them here by Monday, Mr. Harden.
There's that.
We like the name of the agenda item to be? Because we have to put this out tomorrow morning.
We're gonna have to put it out, so what is this called? To come up with an agenda name.
I think we can come up with a title now.
All right. Adjourned.